Everyone sitting out there today, we are practicing on a new computer system, Board Doc. So if we make a mistake or look silly, we're in, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Where's Julie? All right, you ready? She has not called in quite yet. I just texted her and said, "Call." So, oh, I need to call. Okay, so, okay. Do I need to dial mine?
When it's time to vote.
While we're getting Priscilla on before I call to order, when it's time to vote, Julie has a magic thing that comes up in, yes.
You just type in a state.
Technology and it's.
You just type in a state.
Well, I've, no, you say yes, vote yes or no.
Really?
Thank you. Then that's when I text you and say, "Where are you? Hurry up."
Pull it up on your phone while you're in there.
We try not, I mean, we try not to do a whole lot of voting when people are on the screen, but, yeah.
A couple times, that's not normal.
We'll set up a little computer stand in the bathroom back there so you can take away.
On a regular basis.
Sorry.
It's a contentious issue you can't escape anymore.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get started. Just let me make sure, I told her to call. Okay. I am calling to order the Monday, August 27, 2018 Board of Trustees meeting.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Actually, do we have to, so the question, the first question on the table is, item A is not adoption of the agenda, it's call to order.
Right.
Do we have to vote or do anything, or she just moves it on down right after that?
She moves it on down.
Okay.
And then the next item, item 1B, is adoption of the agenda in consent agenda items. And we have a motion.
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Garrett, and we have a second from Mr. Staub's. So on the left-hand side, you guys can, over on the left where you see the agenda, you can click on item B, right? So see how Julie has it up there on the left? You can click on it, and now it says, "Please cast your vote."
Oh, Julie, you just did that, didn't you?
Yes, Julie just did that. So, do voice vote to, just to be sure, Mr. Hollenshed?
Yay.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
And does everybody see where they can vote on the screen?
Are we voting, answering?
Yes.
Yes, we're doing both. Hey, Priscilla, we're voting to adopt the agenda and the consent agenda items. So I need a yes or no from you. Priscilla? She probably has, ma'am.
Yes, it's really loud here, but yes.
Yes, okay, great, all right. You can go back on mute.
I'm gonna mute.
Okay, mute. Mr. Miller?
I, I think I inadvertently voted yes already.
That's okay, you can.
The votes won't show until all the votes show.
Mr. Staub's?
Yay.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so let's just make that clear. When it comes up on your screen, vote, you don't have to, we don't have to synchronize that with our voice. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is item 1C, approval of the minutes from the Ju-
How do we know that this passed?
Wait, sorry? Sorry, my bad.
See, remember, the vote has to show.
Okay, hold on. So, that motion passed.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from July 16th.
Wait a minute.
And August 13th.
Wait, hold on, wait. All right, one person's gonna talk at a time, hold on.
You gotta go.
There you go. Okay, so that's what the-
That's what it looks like when we finish voting.
Okay, so Julie, you ready to go on? All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Staub's to-
Should I break them up, or should I just do 16th and approaching?
Yeah, right now, keep them separate.
Okay.
Unless you want to see Julie's head part two.
Keep them separate.
Let's see that.
We're gonna combine things and move those.
So we have a motion from Mr. Staub's, and do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a second for Mr. Garrett to approve the minutes from the July 16 meeting. So Julie, we have a motion and a second, and I'll, Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Standing.
Ms. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
I.
Mr. Staub's?
Yay.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the motion passes, and in just a minute, it'll pop up on the screen that it passes. So everybody just be patient.
That's how I like Lala Boy Lewis.
This is our very first time, we'll get faster.
We've got to bounce to Priscilla.
All right? So the next motion is the adoption, approval of the minutes from the 8:13 special call meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for August 13.
Have we already approved the July 16? I didn't see that, okay.
And we have a second for Mr. Garrett. All right, so this is a motion to approve the August 13 special call meeting agenda, I mean, minutes. Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yay.
Ms. Coats?
No.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
I abstained a minute ago on the July 16 minutes. And the reason I abstained because, I'm saying, I'm only going on this minute because the minutes that we have, that we're getting now, they don't have very many details in them. I'd like to word before. And so, not that somebody did a bad job, is not doing it right. I like the details of the conversations and the atmosphere of the meeting.
Okay.
So I'm gonna vote no, but not that they're bad, that doesn't mean they're wrong.
Are you abstaining, or are you voting no?
No.
You're voting no, all right. Ms. Jeffrey?
Did you click on that?
Okay, Mr. Miller?
Hi.
Mr. Staub's?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and the motion passes, and in just a second, Julie will have, yeah?
But also for board members that are locally voting, you can also click.
Okay, so click is, yeah, click, so vote, vote on the screen as fast as you can, you don't have to wait for the voice part. And Reverend Collins, if you have specific things you want to see in the minutes, please let the superintendent know.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. The next item is, I need a motion to-
A motion to go into executive session to deal with the matters that are attorney-client privilege and outlawed.
Make your motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion from Mr. Staub's and Reverend Collins, or Mr. Hollenshed, either way.
Try something different this time. Pop up the voting box and give us like 10 seconds to vote before you call the names.
Bring the box in.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, so Julie, can you pop up the voting box?
We'll all go ahead and vote, so she-
Are we on 1E now?
Wait.
We are on 1E.
Yes, we are on 1E, and go ahead and vote, I'm not gonna call your name. If we're all comfortable doing that, everybody votes on your computer to go into executive session. Does everybody have that pop up? Okay?
We can change your vote.
Up in the top right, you can see it says, now you can't change vote because it's done, so that's-
And then it just went off, so how long before we can change the vote?
Till she populates all nine of the answers and puts it on the screen, then the change goes away.
What is "I"? It said "yay" up there, it's "I's."
Let's go to executive session.
The "A."
You're not here picking the bat.
If you don't have one back there, take this with you.
We are reconvening the open session of the August 27, 2018 Board of Directors meeting. If everybody will please stand for a moment of silence and then the pledge, I believe you still have. So a moment of silence. Please join us for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I apologize for us coming out late. We have a new computer system that we're using today, so you'll see it up there. Okay, that's never been a problem before. So I apologize for our delay in coming out. We have a new computer system that we are using. You can see our agenda up there on the screen. Julie has been very patient with us. Today is our first day using it. We'll be voting and going through the agenda, so again, I apologize that it took us a little long. Be patient with us as we move through here. I know a lot of you are here to hear about the Clemson diversity study, which I'm real excited about, so we'll move through the other things quickly. So first item on the agenda is special recognitions, and Reverend Mack and I think are gonna go to do this real quick.
Yep, wrap our end.
How about that?
Okay. So, over the past three years, our board has been a part of more than 100 special recognitions at board meetings, highlighting various awards of our students, our teachers, coaches, administrators, fellow board members, athletic teams, we've had lots of those, schools and organizations honoring more than 800 individuals. But we have not recognized our superintendent, Dr. Jorita Postaway, and we would like to do that this evening. As you can tell, it is a surprise. Dr. Postaway, if you will please come forward.
Don't be scared.
A few weeks ago, during their board meeting, President Cold and the board members of the Medical University of South Carolina unanimously passed a resolution commending Dr. Postaway for her service and leadership in the community. And they wanted to present the resolution during our board meeting. The immediately passed chairman of the MUSC board, Dr. Johnson, is here tonight with me. Dr. Johnson, if you would please come. And along with Dr. Johnson, we also have with us tonight our chief diversity officer of the Medical University of South Carolina, Anton Gunn, if you would please come.
Anton. Well, in fairness, for your board, and by the way, greetings from your sister and brother board down the road. Having served on that board for 25 years, I appreciate the hard work that you guys all do, and so thank you for that. I just want to, before I read this, just let you know what was the impetus of this. Your superintendent, who you are rightly recognizing tonight, by the way, nice clothes choice, just noticed that. This wasn't planned, was it? She has been integral with our ability at the Medical University to work with CCSD. And I would say it's only through her hard work and her willingness to meet with us and work with us, she has been an easy and a phenomenal person to work with, and I think you all should all know that. You know, one of the things we'd like at the Medical University, of course, is for any and all CCSD students that want to go into a healthcare profession to be able to do so. And so with that thought in mind, she's done things like increased our career fares, she's helped us put together tracks to help your students get into our colleges at MUSC. And moreover, in a different direction, to make sure that you have the healthcare needs in your schools met that you need. We have a great telehealth program at MUSC, actually one of the best in the United States, and she's been integral in using that, bringing it into your schools. And not only that, we have, and have made available doctors, nurses, PAs, to come into any of the clinics of any of the facilities that you have, and that's also through her help. And on a personal note to all of you, superintendent included, I would say to you, I currently have three children in CCSD schools, and they've had a great experience, and they were all glad to go back to school last week, so thank you all for that. So if I could, I guess I'll read from here if I can, since this is might. This is a resolution in appreciation of Jorita Postaway, EDD. Whereas, Dr. Postaway became Charleston County Superintendent of Schools on July 9, 2015, a role where she brings a wealth of experience as an educator, practitioner, and leader at the district, state, and national levels. And whereas, Dr. Postaway served as Chair of the State Board of Education, as a member of the National Governing Board of American Association of School Administrators, has held many other prominent state and national leadership positions. And whereas, she has helped establish the National Innovation Lab Network and co-founded Transform South Carolina, a statewide business education partnership that fosters systemic educational change. And whereas, in districts where she has previously served as superintendent, student achievement increased dramatically during her tenure. And whereas, she has been a great partner to the Medical University of South Carolina, in which her goal is to work with educators, students, parents, and community partners to dramatically increase the percentage of students ready to step successfully and productively in careers, college, and life. And whereas, the Medical University of South Carolina, with great appreciation, commends and thanks Dr. Postaway for her leadership and service to the Medical University of South Carolina, the Low Country, and Charleston County schools. Therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Medical University of South Carolina, on behalf of its students, faculty, and staff, and the extended public education community acknowledges and appreciates the outstanding work of Dr. Postaway. Approve this 27th day of August in the year 2018. Thank you again.
Y'all get up and get a picture. You know, you can be in that picture, I don't need to be in that picture. Thank you. That Jorita needs to stay up here. So, also-
Now you need to be afraid.
You can come up, what's the matter? You can come over here. Also, as we begin the 2018-19 school year, with the plan to make this school year the best school year possible, our leader is celebrating a milestone in beginning her 50th year in education, and we want to take time today to thank her for her dedication and unwavering commitment to all children. As a board, not only are we proud, we also have a very special message from our state superintendent of education, Molly Spearmint.
Hello, everyone, and especially my dear, dear friend, Jorita Postaway. I'm so sorry I can't be with you tonight to celebrate your 50 years of service. Jorita, I can't believe it. You're beautiful on the inside and out, and I have always admired you for your great intellect, your commitment to children, your leadership ability. There's so many ways you have made South Carolina a better state. We're so grateful that many of your 50 years have been here in the Palmetto State. Don't stop, we've got plenty of work to do, and we need you for many years to come. Have a great day.
Thank you. So-
You smell really good.
Thank you.
So, you can put them right at Priscilla's seat for a second.
No, because then they blocked me, people can't see me.
We'll move them, we'll move them. You'll get to be on TV, don't worry. So just real quickly, if any of you have been to a board meeting before you read the paper, you know that working with the nine of us, because we're very passionate about education, isn't always the easiest thing to do. But Dr. Postaway has done it with grace, and three years ago, she came on board to Charleston County. She didn't need to work, she came because it was a calling. A calling because in Charleston, we have the best of the best, and we have some of the neediest schools probably in the country, and she wanted to make a difference there. And she has, and it's been hard. We've made it hard on her sometimes, and sometimes we've made it easy, probably a little bit less. But she is working for our schools, and we wanted just to take this time to acknowledge that. Michael, behind the flowers, pointed out to us during executive session, what are we doing for our students? And because of Dr. Postaway's leadership, students are the heart of our mission, and we are going to focus on that every day. So, board members, if everybody would come down so we can do a picture on behalf of our board, thank you for all you do in the Charleston County School District.
Kevin, did you steal a rose from Dr. Postaway?
to recognize the hard work. And Staub's needed a workout with the flowers, so. All right, so the next item on our agenda is visitors and public comments.
Madam Chair, we have three visitors with us tonight. We have Jesse Williams, Anna Marie Daniels, and Soraya McCall.
Soraya.
Soraya, you got it, okay.
So Jesse's first.
In that order, please.
Good evening. Good evening, good evening. I know I've been speaking about a lot of different topics. Today, I want to share a little bit about the issue of the school-to-prison pipeline, and specifically in North Charleston, because the North Charleston schools are still having a lot of problems with that. So I would personally like to see what's got, like how the stats have been looking since they've implemented the restorative justice in those several schools as it applies to North Charleston. So that's a question that I have, but also an observation that I've got concerning that is, there's a lot to be done at the specific schools, and with discipline, and I heard about Shakora Elementary School with the loss of their principal, and the turnover at Garrett with their principal, the turnover at Burns Elementary with a new principal. So that becomes a big problem when you see, when you see the turnover at the schools, and how it affects the kids. So, the suspension rates, I'd like to know how that's looking as it applies to North Charleston. I just feel like there's a lot of specific issues that could be addressed, and I'm gonna try to figure out who I can speak to about that. And I know there's some parents tonight, there's a parent tonight that had an issue with discipline, and so that's all I'm gonna share tonight.
So Dr. Postaway's taking notes, and I'm sure there'll be a staff person that'll follow up with you on that, Jesse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, have we received the last quarter of the last year?
The last quarter, we've had the last quarter of last year, but have we received what the-
The suspension reports.
I don't think so, but we'll get that.
We can give it to him.
Arrest rates, suspension rates, and how that's-
It does report quarterly, when we get it for the end of last year, we'll send it to you.
And how does the, how does restorative justice schools compare to schools that are not restorative justice?
Yeah, I'm sure Ms. Coker can follow up with you on those details.
All right, thank you. Anna Marie Daniels. And then Soraya McCall.
Never done this before. But what I wanted to touch bases on, piggybacking off of Jesse, I am the parent that he was talking about that had issue with discipline. I want to see, or I guess I want to know how we can kind of change some of the rules when it comes to everybody involved in an incident, as far as what happens to every party, versus everybody getting the same, the same action, the same, what's the word I'm looking for?
Punishment.
Punishment, there you go, thank you. The same punishment if you weren't the aggressor, or if you weren't the perpetrator, in whatever the situation is. Because personally, my son was not the aggressor in a situation, and he has some kids that weren't even involved, and everybody got the same thing. And if these kids wanted to go to a different school, like I want to test my child into a school later, if he has a track record of saying he has a charge on his records, you know, it's not gonna look good for him to be able to get into a school. So I want to see how we can change, or see what can be done different as far as giving these kids that don't have a record, because he has none, and just finding different ways to deal with everybody in the situation, not saying, "Oh, that one person should get this one, and nobody gets anything." We just need to figure out and not have a trail of, "Oh, he has this, but he really didn't do anything," because a lot of the kids in the incident didn't have anything to do with it, but they're getting, everybody's getting reprimanded and getting punished for something that could have been dealt a different way. So it's more of, how do we change how the outcome is when it comes to these kids that aren't the troubled ones, and how do we deal with the troubled ones without having such a bad record follow them also?
Okay.
Thank you.
Not naming the school, is it elementary, middle, or high?
Elementary.
Elementary?
Yes, sir.
What area?
Okay.
North Charleston.
We have someone that can cover that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Postaway has it.
Our office became aware of the matter this afternoon, and people are already meeting with the principal to work it out.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Soraya McCall. The "I" in the middle is very tricky.
Yeah.
I just wanted to come in, it's nice to see you all again. I was here last time we met for the Strategic Action Plan, and I just wanted to come and introduce myself and talk a little bit about SC4Ed and Low Country Area Teachers Taking Action. So Low Country Area Teachers Taking Action is a local affiliate of SC4Ed, a statewide grassroots educational advocacy movement. SC4Ed is "By Teachers, For Teachers." We're a nonpartisan group working with administration, school boards, district offices, superintendents, community members, and legislators around the state to improve education in South Carolina for all teachers and students. We're currently focusing on three major issues: fair pay, discipline reform, and equitable funding. This is taking a positive coordinated effort in the community, across the aisle, and up the chain of command. At this time, we're focusing our efforts on voter registration and education. We want to make sure that everyone has the ability to vote and is presented with impartial information about each candidate. As we continue our partnership with the League of Women Voters, we'll be organizing voter registration events around the tri-county area, and we're also beginning to plan our own school board candidate forms in the tri-county area, where new and incumbent candidates will answer questions generated by educators. We maintain a level of professionalism with every move we make. We document communication with educators, we document our work outside of contract hours, we only participate in advocacy work outside of contract hours and school responsibilities. We communicate with a level of positivity. We demonstrate our love and passion for our jobs by fighting for what all educators and students need. We are all too good at our jobs to not be first in the country for education.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comments.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is a special report from Clemson University on inclusion and equity, the report. So, Don, you want to introduce, Mr. Kennedy, you want to introduce that?
So, good evening, everyone, I'm Don Kennedy, the Chief Financial and Administrative Officer for the School District. We have two bodies of work that we want to talk about tonight. One, the critical one, the first, is the one on the Clemson diversity and inclusion study. And then we're gonna talk about the, once the report is issued, so what, what are the next steps? And we have the discussion we want to talk about there on what that looks like. So we have a three-part presentation. I will talk first through the presentation that you see here, then the Clemson team will come and give their report, and then I will come back and talk about next steps. The- will come and give their report, and then I will come back and talk about next steps. My first presentation is titled "K-12 Education in Charleston: Intractable Challenges." So, as a way of introduction, I grew up in South Carolina, I was educated here, and I have, since leaving the state after graduating from Newberry College, I have come and gone in and out of the state a number of times. And I say come and gone, I'm talking about living here a number of times, including, this is my second time as being Chief Financial Officer for the School District. And as I look back over my life, life of what my mother and father had planned for me here in South Carolina, I see these, what I call intractable challenges that are preventing us from moving forward. And so, I want to talk about what some of those are tonight, and then how the Clemson Report can help us move forward. So, this data point, I'll come back to here in a second. Most recently, before coming back to Charleston in January, I was the Chief Financial Officer for Baltimore City Public Schools. In April of 2015, the School District was building a new middle school, Fort Worthenden Middle School. The original school was built in 1962 or 1963, and the construction crew in April of 2015 had to raise and knock down the original building, because the new building, school building was going to be placed right on that same site. The construction crew found a time capsule. So, we had this big ceremony in a big conference room, laying out all the items in the time capsule, and there was a report in there that caught my eye, and it's called a letter, it was called "A Letter to Ourselves." And it was a series of groups of people in 1962 that wrote this multi-page document highlighting all of the issues that were challenges to student outcomes in Baltimore City, and the negative impact it had on the city. The thing that caught me about that, once I read that, was that in April of 2015, the same things that the folks, the citizens of Baltimore were talking about in 1962 were the exact same things that we were dealing with here well over 50 years later. And so, this slide here, then, this is a data point for Charleston County School District, goes back to 2009 through 2017, and it shows the gap of high school English and, of course, completion. And the blue lines represent the white students, and the green line represent African-American students. The state line that's blue, the dotted line is statewide white students, and the solid line is statewide, excuse me, statewide African-American students. And so, you can see the gap between the green and the blue lines there, over that same time period from 2009 to 2007, that there has not been much change in the gap. In 2017, there was a dip downward, that was due primarily to the fact that the tests actually got harder, more difficult, more challenging there. But regardless of that, the changes haven't been forthcoming. So, what I want to talk about for a few minutes is what I call, at the beginning here, the intractable challenges. In 1972, when I was a senior at Newberry College, I was in Air Force ROTC. At that time, I made my first trip ever to Charleston. There were some issues that I noticed here in Charleston then that were similar to Winsburg, Faffler County where I grew up, certainly in Newberry where I was, around racial issues. And coming back here in 2018, I have the same sense that many of these issues have not been addressed, and because most of the opportunities that we have, most of the problems to our opportunities, excuse me, most of the problems that we have, all have a race component here in South Carolina. And that's not uncommon across many places in the country, but I think over a number of years, it's about time for we actually take a look at how do we address those honestly. The second challenge that I see is the governance structure here. In 1968, I think it was, the state legislators created Act 340, which created the Act of Consolidation, which was created in the constituent districts. I think in 1968, there was probably a requirement or a need for that. In 2018, I'm not sure that the, that structure really served the purpose that we need right now. From my perspective, it tends to deepen some of the divisions that we are faced with. So, I've actually worked in the last 14 years in five school districts across the country, and here, I haven't worked in a district that has the diversity of types of schools that we have here. So, we have urban schools, you take a look at the peninsula here, take a look at North Charleston, take a look at the rural parts of the county, on either ends of the county, out in Hollywood areas, an example, up in McClellanville, and of course, the suburban air schools over in, like Mount Pleasant. And so, most districts I've worked in either had one or two of these types of school characteristics, not all three at the same time. And so, all three, each of those has its own set of challenges and opportunities. Now, I don't think we have been able to, at this point, figure out how to overcome those challenges. And then, the last bullet on this slide here is the inability to break cycles of generational poverty. So, when I was contemplating coming back to Charleston in December, that was concurrent with the release of the Charleston, College of Charleston Avery Institute Report on racial disparities in Charleston County. And so, I read that before coming in, and what really struck me about that is not the section on education, but the section on poverty, and how we haven't been able, as a community, to overcome that. And certainly, in my experience, education is a prime contributor to be able to overcome So, I'm going to talk about two aspects of funding here. One, the first one here, is that I believe that the funding structure is inadequate. We all think, at least the board, is aware of the Act 388 and the restrictions that places on the district. When I was the Chief Financial Officer at Boston Public Schools a few years ago, Boston had, at that time, I think roughly the same number now, roughly 56,000 students, and so, we have 50,000 students, so roughly the same amount we have in our general fund budget, half a billion dollars, 500, I think, $7 million budget for fiscal year 19, whereas a Boston general fund budget is more than twice that amount, at 1.1 or 1.2 billion dollars. And I'm not saying that money is the answer to everything, but I know for certainty that Boston has figured out how to address student needs more effectively than we have, simply because they have the funding to do it. And so, I think as we move forward, we need to take a look at how we fund schools here. The flip side of that, though, resource alignment, you know, the first time I came in, came to Charleston, my first foray into K-12 education, I was CFO here in 2004, so 14 years ago. So, when I take a look at all the budgets that have been developed over that time period, both in terms of general fund and special revenue and capital, we have spent a lot of money, you know, millions, billions, billions of dollars on education, yet our outcomes remain constant, the student outcomes remain constant. And some of the things that I think we need to take a look at is how we structure the use of our resources. This graph here, you probably can't see the numbers, the second bar from the left is CCSD. And what these bars represent is the average number of students, the average number of students in a school building in select school districts across the state. So, the first bar is Berkeley County, 761 students per school building on average, Charleston, 563, Dorchester, 2, 1,062, Greenville, 845. So, for instance, like Greenville, Greenville has about 77,000 students, yet they have 87 school buildings. We have 50,000 students with 82 school buildings, so almost the same number of buildings, and the disparity between, the difference rather, between the number of students is great. And when I take a look at Charleston, at 563 students per building, that includes the largest school, high school in the state, Wando, 4,000, so if we were to take that out of the calculation, that number would even be more drastic. So, I think we need to take a look at both additional funding and utilization of funding. So, there's, you know, I say a community-wide resistance to change, and the, I've seen some people talk about what happened in New Orleans after Hurricane Katrina. So, that was a natural disaster that forced change on that district. About eight years ago, there was a movie that came out, Waiting for Superman, talking about the challenges of how we educate all children. And so, the reality is that if we don't do something more proactive, there's not going to be, there's not something that's going to come in from behind us and push us, we have to take it on as a community and make the changes without waiting for something extraordinary to happen. The next one here, school choice. You know, I have five children, and they're all well-educated, and I understand the need to be able to choose the type of education that each of those five needed, they have different, each one have different needs, had different needs. And so, my wife and I, we make sure that we address those needs. Some of that was through school choice, so I'm not against school choice. What I'm pointing out here is that here, that has led, in some instances, if not a lot of instances, to uneven educational opportunities for students. And so, if I'm a child of my family's low economic means, they may not be able to afford to put me into private lessons, as an example, to be able to go into some of the school choice offerings that we have. And so, charter schools here in Charleston, I think, at least it was when I was here before, we had the highest number of charter schools in the district. And when I was here before, and I see it now, I see this community conflicts that are generated by charter schools, also conflict between CCSD, in some cases, and charter schools. Again, I am not against charter schools. My youngest daughter, Courtney, is a graduate of James Allen Charter High School. So, again, what are the needs out there, and how do we address all those needs? And then, the last one here on this page, the perception, at least, of the impact of gentrification on historically African-American neighborhoods. Now, if I take a look at the peninsula, take a look at the peninsula here, and take a look at the schools here, and when I first came back in January, I looked at a couple neighborhoods that I was potentially contemplating moving into, and I still haven't ruled it out, because I'm renting right now, but here on the peninsula. And so, I take a look at some of the neighborhoods that are changing, now I go in, I take a look at the composition of the schools, and those, the composition of schools don't reflect the neighborhood, and so, it has a negative impact on the concept of our neighborhood And then, yes, this is the last one here, the new economy here in Charleston. So, we have the Boeing Company, we have Volvo, we have all of the high-tech opportunities that are here, we have all the other opportunities, the Medical University was here a few minutes ago, talking about their programs. And so, with the growth, I see this creation of external demand on the school system to rapidly increase student levels of achievement, and sometimes, things can't be done rapidly. And the philanthropic community certainly provides impressive levels of support to the School District, and, but again, we have an advocated K-12 system that was designed many, many, many decades ago, that we're still operating under, that will not respond to quick fixes. So, baby's born in 2018, this year, 2018, 18 years from now, in 2036, they will graduate from Charleston County School District. And so, what we're going to talk about after Clemson Study is presented, is what is our shared future for these babies that are being born this year for 18 years from now? So, with that, I will ask Mr. Lee Gill with the Charleston Team to come up, and then we will get back at it.
Okay, sir, thank you, Don. Good evening, everyone. It is, first, I want to say, Don, thank you so much for providing us the overview of the intractable challenges that are facing us here in the district school system. I think you laid it out very well, and frankly, teed it up for us to have this continued conversation regarding the recommendations that the Clemson Team are going to make this evening. I want to start by saying that, first off, our team joined all of you back in January at a first announced meeting that this process, this project, was going to take place. At the end of January, actually, January the 30th, was the first group of team members from Clemson who came to Charleston and stayed for four days. And so that I can thank those team members publicly, just in case there are some friends of them that are in the audience, let me just take a few moments to provide their names, because I want you all to understand the in-depth and the comprehensiveness of this particular study. Dr. Sharice Fine, Clemson University, Dr. Daniella Hall, Mr. Julio Hernandez, Mrs. Moya Jackson, Mrs. Amber Lang, Dr. Jane Clark Lindell, Dr. William McCoy, Mrs. Cindy Roper, Dr. Hazel Roundtree, Dr. Melissa Vogel, and Dr. Curtis White. That group, along with myself and Mr. Greg Ladesky, who will be following me shortly, initially, as I said, came into Charleston to begin a process of focus groups, personal one-on-one interviews, but more importantly, focusing on visiting literally every school in Charleston, fanning out from one end to the other end of this great district. Before we even started that process, we met with every board member, one-on-one, listened to their thoughts, their ideas, their suggestions, their gripes, their concerns, their thoughts for how to improve the School District. We then met with the superintendent on several occasions throughout this process, and, quite frankly, we even came back to some board members and even met them again, talking through how the process worked. We met with administrators of the School District on several occasions. We met with retired school administrators. We met with former board members. Then, we met with the mayors. We went with legislators. We met with business, civic, community, law enforcement. We continued to meet. We then met with food service workers, and information technology specialists, and maintenance workers, and teachers, and students, and assistant teachers, and we met with parents, and special education parents as well. So, throughout this process, we wanted to ensure that through the focus groups, and one-on-one interviews, and community leaders, and community members, and the politicians, we wanted to hear those voices. We met on one occasion at Mother Emanuel with probably about 32 clergy, listening to their voices regarding the Charleston School District and ways to improve and ways to grow. And most importantly of all, how could we support the interest of the children of Charleston County School District? So, that's laying out the table for you. In all, we traveled over... In all, we, uh, traveled over 1,600 miles just in Charleston. That wasn't going back and forth to Clemson, that wasn't going home, that was just in Charleston. 1,600 miles, visiting schools and talking and having interviews, et cetera, et cetera. So amongst all of that, the travel and the discussion and, uh, the listening, we begun to formulate recommendations after analyzing data, um, all of the reports, some of the information that Mr. Kennedy has already shared with us, countless numbers of, countless number of data points, uh, graduation, uh, suspensions, uh, et cetera, et cetera. And what I'm going to now show you is a 20,000-foot view of areas of focus, God bless you, of areas of focus that we are recommending, uh, this, this evening. Following areas are especially critical and are offered as areas where actions must be developed for inclusion in Charleston County School District Strategic Plan. We must close the gaps in performance and achievement. CCSD must address the stark divide between high-performing and low-performing schools due to the low achievement by children of color and poverty that exist at all academic levels of the system. Solutions to, to address this historically under, underachievement by high, by high percentage of districts, tru- children of color and poverty must involve the wider community. This is a 20,000-foot view. Mr. Greg Ladesky will follow me and will get in the weeds. We must make school district governance more efficient, accountable, and credible. And by the way, I just want to say that, that the artwork that you see on this particular slide, uh, when our group was taking a tour through the J.B. Edwards Elementary School, this was one of the nice little pictures that were there that morning, and my group was so impressed by it that they took a picture and made it in part of this, this PowerPoint. CCSD must address the governance structure related to the constituent districts, which has deepened the district's division by race, poverty, and political status. Additionally, any action undertaken by CCSD or its governance boards must include as a critical component the impact they, that any action taken will have on building or eroding of trust among all groups. Reform the system to ensure access to quality schools. CCSD must address the effectiveness of the district's magnet and choice programs in terms of determining if they are achieving the goals under which they were formed. The board must be willing to take action to open, close, merge, and redesign ineffective schools or programs. The district must also ensure equitable access to high-quality programs and courses for all students. Engage community stakeholders. CCSD must address the disconnect between the economic growth of the community as a desirable place to live and conduct business and the high number of areas where the schools do not mirror that message. Stakeholders from throughout the district must be engaged as partners with CCSD to ensure that the public schools in the district contribute to a higher quality of life. 2020, there is a restructuring referendum that's coming forward. We're making a recommendation that that 2020 school improvement recor- referendum be used as a catalyst to achieve equitable opportunities for all students. And now the follow-through. One of the first things that, as Greg will come in and get into the weeds on these recommendations, part of our conversation that we often heard from the various groups that we met with was that we've had studies and we've had reports in the past, but there's been no follow-through. I think already, Mr. Kennedy and some of his opening remarks and some of the information that he has provided us will follow us after our presentation to talk about how to take these recommendations and follow through. No longer sitting on a shelf gathering dust, but the next stages of actually pulling the trigger to make the school district successful for graduation of our students. Mr. Ladesky?
Thank you, Lee. Uh, thank you, Lee, and, uh, thank you, Board, for giving us this opportunity to, to do this important work. One thing that's been in my heart to say is that we will be talking a great deal about shortfalls and gaps and so forth, and that's because you don't need us to come here and pat you on the back. But all of the members of the team, uh, would say to you, you have wonderful teachers in this, in this district. You have great teaching assistants and principals and staff in every school. So when we're talking about closing that achievement gap and bringing more equity, this is not a rap on those dedicated people. We're doing it for the students, but we're also doing it for those professionals and, and everyone who supports them. As Lee said, uh, I'm going to get into the weeds a little bit, but I hope, uh, quickly enough to not take too much time or, uh, or get bogged down. But in terms of closing the gap, what are some of the ideas that we have, that, that the team has put together to, uh, to achieve that? One idea is bringing a team of experts, creating a team of experts, and tasking them to determine what resources and management authority are needed to improve the performance of students in every school. This is not a recommendation for more recommendations. We think that there's enough evidence and information for a team like that to put together additional action items within three months, um, or certainly quickly. Uh, with regard to individual schools, we need to, we, I'll say, we need to set realistic but firm timeframes for principals, teachers, and schools to show progress. Now that means, the realistic part means, no one is going to come in and be a turnaround agent in, in one year or in six months or whatever. It also means that everyone needs the resources to, and, and ability and training and so forth to do, to do their job. You cannot assign, you cannot make people accountable unless you give them the tools to, uh, to do what they need to do. That said, those people who do not meet, uh, certain performance standards or, or show certain progress in schools, um, something needs to change then, cannot go on forever. Some teachers, uh, certainly in staff, uh, could be rewarded monetarily, um, and they certainly could use their expertise to become trainers and mentors for others. Master teachers and principals could be identified based on, uh, objective standards and use that expertise to help other people reach that same high level. Again, make timely changing to staffing and programs that just are not having the positive impact on students. Set a timeframe, stick to it. And finally, be willing to close or repurpose schools that continue to fail their students based upon agreed upon measures. There are many schools that have shown some progress, but there are some where we just don't see the, the change year after year. It's not time to, to study again, it's time to take action. Now, continuing closing the, the gaps, um, there are some extremely good models for schools right here in Charleston County. Determine whether those promising existing schools can in some measure be replicated and scaled to serve additional students. Again, we saw some schools, in some cases, in the most difficult circumstances, doing a remarkable job. What are they doing right? How can we do that somewhere else? Looking outside the Charleston, current Charleston School District schools, what are the successful national and state public-private partnerships for school management? And do they offer something that is desirable and feasible to implement, at least on a small-scale trial here? Superintendent has already been doing a good deal of data collection, data, uh, publication, making that transparent. We certainly, uh, encourage you to continue that and to make sure that, uh, data collection is not only gathered but publicized, publicized to the schools themselves, to the parents, to everyone who's interested in the future of students here. Okay, um, as Lee mentioned, um, the team focused on a cluster of, uh, issues in, in, uh, regarding making school district governance, uh, more efficient, more accountable, more credible. Uh, we would suggest that individuals from the outside who have expertise in boards, boards of industries, boards of, of, uh, other educational systems, boards of health systems, what have you, we would suggest that they, um, come in, have a look, uh, sit in on some board meetings, talk with board members, and from time to time, give them the opportunity to comment publicly on what they see in terms of how, uh, board governance could be more effective, efficient, and credible here. We do suggest that all board members receive at least four hours of training on some issues such as the proper role and authority of the board and members, the relationship of the board to the superintendent, uh, and other district staff, conflict of interest rules, real and apparent conflict, or perceived conflict of interest, rules of procedure and rules of conduct. We would also suggest, uh, designating a parliamentarian who could oversee procedures. Uh, many boards that I have worked with in my career had a parliamentary, uh, parliamentary, uh, parliamentarian, either as an ex-official member or as a member of the board, to resolve disputes and move things forward, um, effectively and as smoothly as possible. Uh, also, one issue with regard to constituent boards, um, we are concerned about the consistency of the work that constituent boards do with regard to things like discipline, um, setting attendance zones and so forth. Uh, we would recommend that, uh, at some, that you consider certainly, um, making sure that those constituent board members have training before they are in a decision-making role, uh, for those, uh, areas. Okay, reforming the school system to ensure access to quality schools. This is, uh, pretty obvious and very important. Too many schools do not offer, uh, let's say middle schools or high schools do not offer, um, high-level math courses, they do not offer physics, um, and if your school does not offer high-level math and physics, that will limit, uh, futures. So that, that is kind of a, a baseline. Every school should offer, uh, should offer those courses, or at least you should consider that. We recommend that you consider reviewing magnet school residency rules and other preferences, like sibling preferences, that may hinder the application and enrollment of, uh, students from, uh, poor and minority families, uh, students with different socioeconomic status and so forth. Make changes to make those schools inviting, attractive, and accessible. Uh, transportation is one of those issues that, that we heard consistently might be a barrier, uh, for example, to attending, uh, a magnet school. There should be some transportation solution that could be, uh, available to make sure that transportation is not keeping students from going to a magnet school that they would choose to attend and that they could, that they could otherwise attend. And again, talk about the weeds, but the application procedures, talking with, talking to parents, um, and, and others, the application procedures, um, in many cases are, are forbidding and, and constitute a barrier in and of themselves. Something as simple as paper forms, where some parents may not have the computer literacy, uh, having, uh, assistance, uh, and guidance, uh, for parents to, um, to navigate the, the system for access to those magnet schools, um, we think could encourage more students to attend. And certainly making parents more comfortable with the notion of sending their children to a magnet school, showing them the opportunities and the possibilities, and also reassuring them that that is a good step, that that, that that could serve their children's needs very well. Okay, um, and continuing, um, reforming the system to ensure, uh, quality acts, or access to quality schools. Make sure that these schools are held accountable in the same way that your, that, that the base schools are held accountable in terms of performance and achievement, not just for the high level or even for the average, but for students overall. Sometimes acknowledging, acknowledging, asking, suggesting an acknowledgement doesn't seem like a step, but we think that there are some arguments, some disputes that need to just be put behind, uh, people here. And one of those is stop arguing about whether the choice school system creates and encourages and perpetuates inequity. Every member of our team believes that, to some extent, it does. That does not mean that the system is flawed or should be scrapped. It means that it should be reformed to make those wonderful schools available to all the students. Down the road, there should be examination of the extent to which, um, the choice school system has an, uh, an impact on, uh, students from various neighborhoods, various backgrounds, and so forth. And to the extent that that does have a negative impact, how can that be remediated beyond the, the kinds of steps that we are suggesting you consider here? Okay, finally, uh, or not finally, but engaging community stakeholders. Lee and I and, and others spent hours and hours talking with people from outside the school district. Businessmen, leaders of, of civic organizations, faith leaders, uh, political leaders and so forth. And I'm, I'm sorry to report that many of them are concerned about how welcome or not welcome they feel to engage with the district. Now I've heard other individuals from within the district say that that is all talk. We would suggest that you put people to the test. If, in fact, they really want to be engaged and are given the opportunity to engage and do not do so well, then you'll know. But if, in fact, there are barriers to the, to the But if, in fact, there are barriers to the, to the kind of engagement that would help the students and the children of this school district, we would encourage you to consider One, one idea of many certainly is to have some sort of a system in which businesses could adopt a school. Large businesses, small businesses, some sort of, if you like, matchmaking service. But this should not be driven just by the business or corporation or entity itself. It should be done in accordance with what the district, with district guardians, on what those students need. So you don't have cowboys coming in to, to try to take over, that won't work. But you do have entities that have the resources, and that might include not just money, people are being, are tired sometimes of being asked for money, but talent. Do they have staff members? Do they have employees with expertise in STEM fields or what have you? And if they do, how could they help in the classroom? Do they have equipment they could loan and so forth and so forth? Time, talent, and treasure. Same thing goes, not just for the corporations in the business community, but for civic organizations, churches, other faith communities. They could adopt a school, again, mindful of what the district's needs are, not what their own, what their, what their own ideas are, but mindful of that, how could they help a particular school, especially those distressed and challenged schools? It could be very useful if some umbrella organization took the lead in coordinating with the district, not parallel to the district or outside, but coordinating with the district to channel volunteers, funds, and other resources, especially to the poor and distressed schools. We know that apparent organizations in some, some schools have the ability to raise large sums of money, and that's what parents do. But that's putting a thumb on a scale for schools in many cases that are already ahead of the game. To have some counterweight for other schools, we're not talking about taking away from anyone, but for adding to it where that would make the most difference and be the most help, that we, we think certainly should be a, could be, sorry, could be a community-wide Also, we would suggest that you consider a comprehensive communication plan that would explain why all of this is important. Why are you doing this? Why did you spend money to bring in Clemson, other experts, all this, all these efforts that Mr. Kennedy spoke about? Some people don't understand yet, not only that it's desirable, but that it's possible. So we would suggest some kind of communications plan. That might include a two-way communication, now this is between parents and school officials, but between all members of the community and school officials, where the district and its representatives talk to them, they talk to the district, and there's information flow instead of recriminations and resentment. Regular interviews with print and broadcast media to share news and take questions. In discussions with members of the media, we heard a great willingness, a great desire to help. I don't know that people feel always that the media are helping in this effort, but certainly we heard that they, many of their representatives want to. It does not have to be a fraught relationship between the media and the district. And we would suggest that you consider whatever could be done. Also, as stretched thin as the superintendent and other members of the, of the district and board are, we heard in many occasions the desire to see these people up close and personal in meetings, at churches, at board, at regular meetings of a particular organization or business group or civic group like Rotary and so forth. And since the superintendent and the top officials can't be available everywhere all the time, perhaps there are other people who could fan out and really engage and put, put a human face, if you like, in front of these folks out there in terms of what the district's needs are, how people can help, what the district's successes have been, and really talking about the importance of making this school district work for children everywhere, throughout. Lee talked a little bit about the 2020 School Improvement Referendum. It's not our place to say what you, how you should prioritize that, but certainly that is a moment when reform kind of makes sense. That's a time, if you like, to potentially reboot. Consider some, consider injecting money into some of the bold initiatives that you may need to change programs, to change facilities, and so forth. So one thing is define the program that should, that every student should have access to. Another is to decide what the optimal school enrollment ranges are. Can a school be too big? Can a school be too small? And if a school is, is not, does not have the right population, how can that be changed in a way that does not seem like abandonment or exile to those students? Certainly, it's high time to consider the attendance zone lines and how those are impacting students throughout the Charleston County School District. 2020 Improvement Referendum is an opportunity to do that, but now is a good time too. Where appropriate, adjust allocation structure to ensure that students are adequately supported. Give schools with the greatest needs the greatest help. As Mr. Kennedy said, money is not a solution to everything, but money doesn't hurt. And we certainly, I'll speak only for myself. I spoke to some school administrators who said in confidence that they did not have certain resources that they wished they had. Students performing at or above grade level should continue to receive or help to accelerate, and that would include talented and gifted, sorry, gifted and talented, I'm used to the other way around. Let's not, again, let's not engage in leveling, let's, let everybody rise. Follow through, as Lee said, and I will simply say, the team is concerned that we have read other reports that apparently were not implemented, or at least we saw, we didn't see evidence of that. Our contract is concluded, at least as far as my involvement goes, and so someone needs to carry that ball forward, not to do another step, but to decide how ideas that we had and that other people had can be implemented and brought to bear soon, sooner rather than later, certainly. We feel that this should be a group from outside the district, that doesn't have ties to the district, but still would have understanding of the district, and should be able to mediate, negotiate, talk with the people who may have fraught or difficult or, or, what's the word? Let's just say, difficult relationships. Contentious.
Yeah, he said it.
It should be independent and free from obligations to local business leaders and local political leaders. And they should agree to ambitious timelines. They should formulate additional recommendations. Again, what we brought forth is the consensus of a team of 14 experts, multidisciplinary, multicultural, lots of brains brought to bear, and as, as Lee pointed out, hundreds and hundreds of hours. But there may be other ideas, and some of the ideas that we suggest are better, probably better than others. So prioritize, but move. Implement the recommendations through a benchmarked action plan.
So.
I know you're not done, but really great work.
No, no. That's a lot of talking, I hope you get some water. The cameraman's head might be in the way, but I want you all to see equality and equity. Equality and equity. And I know what the school district wants, is to be able to move the learning outcomes forward for the children of Charleston. And so hopefully, we're adding to that process along with what we believe now are the next steps to follow through on recommendations. To that end, I'm going to turn you back over to Mr. Don Kennedy.
So as was said by both Lee and Greg, what are the next steps here, and that's what I want to take a few minutes to talk about. So this cartoon here actually relates to the first slide that I talked about on my first presentation, about, what it says is, I want you to find a bold and innovative way to, to do everything exactly the same way it's been done for 25 years. And so that actually relates to, to my story that I told, which is a true story about the outcomes in Baltimore City Public Schools, and certainly the things I'm taking a look at here in Charleston County. So the imperative for change, this is from the CCSD Strategic Plan, that we have this imperative for change. We all aware of the Charleston being the best in this category, best in that category, best in a lot of categories, as well as the opportunities that exist here through the multiple sectors that have grown in recent years. Yet, when we take a look at our system of public education, it does not adequately ensure that all of our students have access to, to that, to those opportunities. And so how do, how then do we take what's been done by Clemson, what's been done by the Avery Institute, what's been done by a number of organizations and people to make, to make it actually happen in terms of better outcomes? The next two slides talk about what has occurred recently within CCSD, so this is within the school district. These are some of the things that have been happening since, right before I got here in January. You can see the creation of the 2017 Strategic Plan, the Clemson Diversity and Inclusion Study, that is concluding now, analysis of school design and resource allocation. So there's a long list of things, well, relatively long list of things that have been taking place recently here in the, in the school district. And on the second slide here, during that same time period, or during relatively the same time period, there's a number of things that have been initiatives and efforts that have been pushed forward outside of the school district to have impact on student outcomes. But yet, again, the, the system never seems to change. And what I did, when I pulled these two slides together, I looked back in three-year increments, so from 2018, 2015, 2012, '29, and back to about 2006. And when I take a look at the initiatives over that time period, they have different names, maybe different organizations, but the approaches have been similar and like Baltimore. Here, we have not been able to make those, those, those changes. And so the question then becomes, if we have a lot of smart people, we have a lot of initiatives that are designed to improve student outcomes, and yet we haven't done that, what are then the, what are the impediments, what are the impediments to, that will not allow that to, to happen? And so we don't know where those impediments are, we know what the initiatives have been, we know what the initiatives are being proposed, but we've seen proposed initiatives implemented before without the outcomes that we need. And so what we want to take a look at is this notion of a shared future project, that we determine the impediments, we focus on how to overcome those impediments, and then we create a strong future for education in Charleston County. And that's where, when Greg was talking about, looking outside for the right group of people to do that, to answer this critical question, what should, what should we do next? How do we align all these different studies and strategies? How do we coordinate throughout the system, the all organizations that are involved? How then do we create a plausible future for the district and implement those potential And so where does the experience exist to create a path forward? So down at the bottom of this slide, there's an organization that we're bringing in called RIO Spartans. It's an international group that's done complex work in many parts of the world. I have a few examples here, all these examples are listed on their website. The first one here, South Africa, in 1992 post-apartheid. So there's a person that's one of the consultants that was in South Africa, he's a Canadian guy, his name is Adam Kohane. He, in 1992, with the fall apart that, with the president then declared, with the Nelson Mandela, and other factors there in, in South Africa that wanted to come together and figure out how to create a democracy going forward. This person was the prime facilitator in coming up and creating what they call several scenarios of possible futures. And then once those scenarios, those possible futures were created, then there were concerned people that came together, latched themselves onto one or more of those scenarios, and actually created the structure that pulled South Africa out of apartheid. Now, certainly today, there's some, there's been challenges over the years, but certainly they also, they were able to move forward. The bottom one there, Colombia, the same person with the, with the same group, they did similar work in the country of Colombia with the Farc rebels there, when they were in, in conflict with the government. As you know, recently, the government of Colombia just had elections, so they worked through those, those complex problems. They're currently working in Brazil on the future of education across the entire country of Brazil, they're doing similar work on education in Mexico. The last one here, which is actually the second one, health equity in the United States. I actually participated in one of these projects the winter of last year, that was funded by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation, looking at how can we address health inequity as a country? And in coming out of that work with some of these scenarios that were created, down in New Orleans, there's a, a group of health professionals there that have latched onto one of the scenarios and making changes there, and also a group out of Seattle doing, doing similar work. So the work itself then is in three phases. Phase one is to initiate the project. Phase two, construct the implementation scenarios. And I want to pause here and say that the work that Clemson has done, the work that Avery Institute has done, the work that I've been doing, the planning, the planning is the easy part of this work. It's been my experience in the 14 years that I've been in K-12, is that we are very good as an industry of planning, but we have some challenges when it comes to implementation. And so the planning intent is to, to stop planning and actually start implementing. And so once the scenarios are completed, then the work begins, how then do we take those scenarios and implement? So that, you know, in 20, again, in 2036, the kids, the babies that are being born now can look back and say, well, we did a good job. So the work is in, in several parts, the first piece is called organizing. The first piece is called organizing team, and that's a group of about a dozen people or so that will come together, that actually have come together, to talk about how we plan this out. They consist of what we call, what the RIO Partners call honest brokers. So these are people that want solutions to problems, that don't necessarily have to push their particular viewpoint, they might, but they also are open to coming up to the right solutions. And so that team has been created, and the people on the team are experienced in getting things done. It has a level of diversity around age, around race, around profession. And we have two students on that team, by the way, so when you talk about age, we have an 11th grader, just started 11th grader at academic, 11th grade at Academic-Magnin, and we have an 11th grader just started at Stoll High School in 11th grade. And then once we expand, which I'll talk about in a second, we will double the number of students. And when I was in the, just working in Chicago last year, we had four students there, and it was incredible how they, how they actually influenced the thinking of people of my age and, you know, well, the adults. All right, so who does the actual hard work of developing the scenario? So that's a team of about 24 people. We are reaching out to try and to form those teams now. They engage in three, actually two-and-a-half-day scenario workshops. And so those workshops are being initially contemplated for the end of September, end of October, and end of November. Coming out of that, those workshops then would be the two to four scenarios that will give us a path forward along several of those, you know, three or four different paths. They will be distinct, and they will be realistic, they'll be plausible, something that is implementable, not that's something that's necessarily, something that's desired, desire that's not doable. I want to point out here, I think it's the fourth bullet, says team members do not have to agree on a particular point of view for the path forward. I talked about the work in South Africa, I talked about the work in Colombia. When Adam talks about his work in Colombia, and then when he describes it in a couple of books he's written, he talks about the fact that in Colombia, they had people that were actually at one point shooting at each other, sitting down at the same table trying to figure this out. Not saying that's the issue here, so don't get me wrong, but we, we do not have to take this work on.
If that's what it takes.
Well, we don't have to take this work on with the expectation that we all are going to agree. We are not going to agree. And so the work then is trying to figure out, knowing that we're not going to agree, how then do we come together and figure out solutions that are the best solutions for, you know, so it's for our kids, but it's also for the community as a whole. And that's what I have, that's been the big disappointment in my life. It's been a huge disappointment. So obviously, things cost money. We had the contract with Clemson, we're talking about continuing the work. And by the way, on that organizing team, just to demonstrate that this is a continuation of the Clemson work. Clemson is not simply just handing this off to us. Mr. Lee Gill here, he's a part of that organizing team that I talked about. We had a meeting two and a half weeks ago, he was there. He has agreed to be a part of the larger group of the scenario team. So that connection between what Clemson has started and what we hope to work with our RIO Partners to move forward. Now, so the presentation I'm making tonight is my administrative job. Obviously, I have a finance job too, so with the finance piece, I wanted to take a look at how we might begin the funding on this. We have a very, a very effective purchase card, a P-card rebate program, that is not appropriated dollars, that I have set aside in a special revenue fund. And so what the intent is, is to use the rebate from the credit card or the P-card program to get this work up and running. Now, once we get started in terms of what I call the hard work, once the scenarios are built and developed, and some people take on that work, then the funding becomes another issue, but actually getting to that point, we've gotten that started. And then wrapping up here, you know, what this says is, if we don't change at all, what if we don't change at all and something magical just happens? So it says at the top here, practical consideration. So Adam Kohane, the guy I talked about that did the work in South Africa, who's a world-renowned leader on transformational scenario plans, he has a book called Collaborating with the Enemy. In that book, he talks about a story when he was in South Africa in the 1990s, dealing with the apartheid situation, that the group of people there said they had two ways, two options to get the work done, a miraculous option and a practical option. And said the practical option was for all of them to get down on their hands and knees and pray that a band of angels would descend from heaven and take care of their problems. Said the miraculous option is for all of them to come together and work to solve their problems. So what I submit to the board, I submit to the community of Charleston County, is that we come together and we create the shared future for the class of 2036 and for the classes behind them. So with that, what questions do you have?
Mr. Kennedy, these funding, is it available immediately?
For the P-card?
The rebates?
Yes, ma'am.
This gives you money immediately?
It does.
Okay, good.
Mr. Schobbs?
All right, so my question's more, I guess, for the Clemson folks. I wanted to know if you guys got a chance to analyze our unique structure in Charleston County of having a two-tiered governance system between having a board of trustees and a constituent situation of board of trustees, and whether that has anything to do with our success or lack of success reaching all children?
The direct answer to your question is, yes, we did do that analysis, and yes, we do have some thoughts on whether it makes for success or it doesn't make for success. And part of that analysis at this point does not make for success.
The structure that it is right now does not make for success, okay. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Hollenshead, and then Reverend Collins?
I really wish that a report of this validity, what had been done in a COW meeting, when the board members can kind of wrap their hands around it, and we can have discussions about the report. Me, this kind of seems like it's a dog and pony show tonight. The information is pretty good, but it's stuff that we have been talking about for the last two years I've been sitting on this board. So all I did was get a review of discussions that we have had over the last course of two years. I really think some of it really needs to be digested, as I like to use the term, knee-jerk reaction. I like to talk it over with my, some of my board members, get a better understanding. I appreciate the report that you did tonight, but, you know, you're asking some things that, you know, we need to go back and talk to our constituents about. There were some critical things in here, I think, that just needs to go back to the barbershop room and talk about and then share. I would like to have what you just presented in the PowerPoint to discuss those things with leaders that I see in the back of the room and around the county. I'm not knocking it, that's not what I'm saying. I just think that I really would have loved it in the COW meeting, when we could have kind of just sat around the table and discussed a little bit more.
I think, if I may respond, so in a week or two, Clemson will release a report, a written report, not just a PowerPoint summary. So you have the more detail in the written report, and I'm certain that there will be future discussions and deliberations.
Thank you.
Reverend Collins?
I'll thank you and Clemson for the report we have seen so far. You know, it's a lot of statistics. When you first got out, you showed us page four of the handout, you know, the K-12 page. But on page four, it really stuck out, the bullet point, persistent lack, persistent lack of academic achievement for many children of color and poverty, inability to break cycles of generational poverty. And it really kind of summarized all the work that the diversity study is designed to do in that one statement. It just brings it right to the day that an achievement gap where children of color are about 30 points behind children of non-color persistently, consistently. And so I wonder, this is not a question you've written as an answer, but just to hear me, so how do we maintain a system where children of color are persistently lacking academic achievement? It seems to me that somehow that system is created, not necessarily intentional, but that's the result of a system that's created, that if these children are persistently, and not only that, but you said about their persistently remaining in poverty, so if they're not educated, they don't get high-paying jobs, they don't get the best of their career, and that cycle just continues on and on. So we have to restructure education and process when we get this finalized report. You know, what we have here in Charleston County basically has to be torn down and rebuilt. And I'm sure there's some intended work diligently to get something in place that's going to work. But one thought came into my mind, I want to share with you, just was that a lot of children of poverty neighborhoods, especially some of the boys, they don't learn, they don't learn very well in a class, in a large classroom with a lot of children. You got several children playing and goofing off, and someone outside making noise, they don't do well enough, I mean, at all. They do better in much smaller settings, in one-on-one. And then we can afford to, we can start focusing on that, having some of these younger children in smaller group settings, I think we begin to see some real results, and so a lot of one-on-one. But I'm gonna stop there, but it was just striking to see the chart, the chart with a 30-point spread, and almost 40 at some points, and then to see your findings that persistently lacking academic achievement, that has to stop.
Mr. Schobbs?
All right. I heard a couple of comments that caught my attention, and basically they come down with the question of how do we grade or quantify whether students are doing better or improving? I heard mention of performance standards to determine progress at schools, objective measures for success. The question, and I just want to get confirmation on this, over the last couple of years here at CCSD, after Dr. Postaway came in and made some pretty significant changes, we got equally significant pushback from the community. They got very upset. We had hundreds of people outside of this building holding picket signs and just protesting, being graded. What type of quantification are you talking about? I think what I'm hearing is that we would actually look at how these kids do on certain tests and grade whether there's a success or not. And I just want to confirm, that's what you're saying? Testing?
Well, yes, to a point. As one of the points that we made earlier, people cannot be expected to come in, turn a class, even a particular student around, they have to have the tools, and they also have to have the time and experience and so forth. There are, we have members of the team from the School of Education, that's not my wheelhouse, so I'm not comfortable saying what the measures are. But let me give you one measure that I've heard a lot. If a student does not read on grade level by third grade, that student is highly likely to not have a successful educational career. So there's a benchmark right there. And I guess I'm just gonna leave it there. That's the kind of, that's a quantitative analysis. I also want to say, you can't always measure a performance by achievement, by progress, because in some cases, the progress is already high, and then people feel like they're being rewarded because they can't squeeze that last 10% out. But those are some of the, those are some of the factors for why is it mine's and mine's.
Mr. Miller?
First of all, thank Lee Gill and the Clemson folk for the presentation and for the work that you guys did, going through and coming through our system, identifying points of, points of critical need, as well as areas where we're doing seemingly very well. And I want to also thank Mr. Kennedy for his own personal story and your ability to share that with us in only the way you can. Over the weekend, I was watching one of the Rocky movies, I'm kind of a Rocky fan. And I think it was in Rocky IV, I think, when Rocky was fighting the Russian, I think it was. And he came home one night after driving, and he was having a conversation with his wife about fighting the Russian. And Rocky came up with all of these scenarios as to why he didn't want to fight him, or why he wanted to fight him. And so Adrian kept asking him, said, "Rocky, we got everything, but we don't have the truth." I think, I'm sorry, that was when he was fighting Mr. T in Rocky III. And so...
Did our Rocky story straighten out?
Yes, Rocky's story, I gotta get my, if I'm gonna cite Rocky, I gotta at least get my story straight.
Get your right Rocky.
Right, right, right. And they were on the beach, and Rocky was saying all these things, like he didn't want to lose his house, he didn't want to lose this. And Adrian said, "Rocky, we got everything, but we don't have the truth." And I think that's one thing this district hasn't had, is the truth. I think Mr. Lee and his group scratched the surface, and I appreciate to some degree them being kind in their presentation, but I wanted you guys to come in here and just tear the sheets off the bed and just tell us the truth. The truth is, Mr. Kennedy, that yes, years and years and years and years ago, and constantly, this district has worked on plans and programs to elevate student achievement and to address communities. But the truth is, and this is just my opinion, that as a whole, this system does not believe that all children can learn and be successful. And someone said, "Well, Mr. Miller, why could you, how could you possibly say that?" There's a rapper that says, "Mereous don't lie, and numbers don't lie." Our data tells me, and anybody who's got half a brain, that we have not been committed to educating all children in this district. We use race, we use poverty, we use everything we can think of, but we don't have the truth. The truth is, sir, when you mentioned we have wonderful teachers and principals in this district, I know that we do. But what we do not have, in my opinion, is a consistent, persistent effort, regardless of student, race, income, background, where they live, where they don't live, we don't have the fundamental belief that every child, no matter what they look like, can achieve at a high level. Because if we did, our numbers would not reflect that, reflect the way that they do. I got one vehicle. When my car gets a flat tire, that car gets all of my attention till I get back on the road. That's the only car I got. That's the kind of deliberateness we need to have when it comes to educating all children. So when we talk about school choice and magnet schools, again, this is just my humble opinion, I don't believe those schools were created to make sure all children would be successful. I think it was created that some would be successful, only a few. Now, the question then becomes, is everybody okay with that? You just mentioned pushback. Pushback tells me that people do not want to change. Pushback tells me things are okay as long as mine are good, right? As long as my kids are good, I don't care if the house falling down, I'm gonna protect mine. The nine of us can't do that. The 10 of us can't do that. Your leadership team can't do that. The community as a whole... The community as a whole should not be willing to settle for that. But they have. They have. Every recommendation you brought to us, all nine of us already know that. Without a doubt, y'all ain't tell us nothing new we ain't never heard before. We all knew that. What we don't have is the commitment. I guarantee you right now, if I made a motion to close charter in magnet schools today, there'd be another riot outside tomorrow. There'd be thousands of parents outside protesting, asking for all of us to lose our jobs. All of us should be voted off. Why? Because the question really becomes, and Jerita mentioned this a couple of years ago, or maybe even not even quite a year ago, has, has school choice better served all of our students? If that answer is no, then my next question is, then why do we have them? It's simple. It ain't rocket science. It's not. They told us what we already know. What we lack is the will to do it. And I'm not saying all of us, I'm not saying one of us. I'm saying collectively as a community, as a greater Charleston community, from McClellanville to Edisto, to Latson, to the Peninsula, we lack the will to do that. Why? Because some people don't want to deal with the pushback that comes with that. Some people don't want to let, to look at their neighbor and say, you're the reason why they closed my school. Some people will say, well, I can't, I want my kid to go to a magnet school, but I use public transportation that we pay for, the district, the city residents pay for, and those students get Durham buses, which are the better buses than state on buses. This system is, is hurting children at its core. And we sit back, and I say we as a board, and I hold myself more responsible than anybody else, because I can't, I can't answer for Eric and everybody else, I can only answer for me. I feel like I'm not doing enough, but I know more needs to be done. So I'm hoping with the written explanation you guys brought with, you brought to us, that with each of those comes a, the next step for that individual line item. Then hopefully, as board members read that, and community folks read that information, that they dig deep somewhere in their backyard and find the courage to do the work that needs to get done. Because that's what it takes. It takes the courage to stand up in front of thousands of people who are protesting and saying, yes, you might not like the decision that we made, but that decision was predicated on the fact that children should be at the heart of our work. And that means all children. And some people, Mr. Lee, are not gonna like the, the, um, the, the picture of the equity versus equality. Some people think that's not fair. But at the end of the day, if it's about children, if it's really about children, I don't care if everybody get mad. I don't care if none of y'all never talked to me. Seriously, I just don't. I'm not bothered by that. But at the end of the day, if the work is not about our children, not just the two that I have, but the fifty-five thousand that we share together, if that's not at the basis of our work, then none of this means anything. I mentioned that in the back. It's about the children. It's not about a school, or about that neighborhood, or that community school. No, no. We have to properly serve all of our babies. And I'll be the first one to tell you, we're not doing that. This district hadn't done it. That's why they created Act 340, the Act of Reconsolidation. That's why they did that. It was a pushback. That's what it was. But we gotta own that. Not just we as the nine of us, and I don't think it should all fall solely on us, although we, we bear the brunt of that, because we asked, elected, we asked the public to vote for us, to vote in the best interest. But we gotta also ask ourselves, vote in the best interest of who and whom. Not those who just elected us, and the pockets of people who do that across the county, but for babies who we see and we don't see when we go visit our schools, or when we look at these PowerPoints and we see those pretty faces on the screen. They're counting on us to get the class of twenty thirty-six right. The question is, do we have the guts to do it? Because if we don't, then we shouldn't sit here.
That's true.
If we do, and we're willing to take the bullets, because bullets are gonna come, the emails are gonna come, the phone conversations are gonna come, you're gonna get blasted in, in social media, you're gonna get blasted on phone conversations. At the end of the day, who cares? Who really cares? If we're doing the work? So I appreciate the presentation. I'm looking forward to what's coming next. Mr. Cam, hoping with the recommendations that they bring, we have the resources to put people in place to do this kind of work. But one thing we can't buy is, we can't buy courage, brother.
No.
And that's what we need. I wonder if they got some of that at Clemson, because we need to borrow some if they got some.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Staubes and then Mr. Allencheck.
All right, so I wanted to kind of find out what the next step is, because like Michael, I think Act 340 had a lot to do with what we're seeing right now in Charleston County, all these many years later. Where, and, and it's probably the South that we're looking at, that's probably where we're gonna find districts that are similar, counties that are, boards of education, educational programs across the South are gonna have similar demographics. Where has someone been successful that we, as a group of nine of us, can use some of those successes? Because one of the things I heard in the presentation was that we should look outside of our area, whether it's outside of here in our state, or outside of our area, across the nation. Where are some successes that we, as a group, can try to duplicate, rather than us just picking this one here, picking this, thinking we're doing the right thing? We're, we're not experts, but you guys are. And I'm hoping that the next step, when you come back with, with the deliverable, whether that's next week or next month, that there are some suggestions there of things that the nine of us can do, where hopefully there is some place in this country where it's actually worked, that we can actually move the needle and do something good.
Kevin?
No, I'm just echoing off of what Michael said. When I first got on this board, and I was kind of naive, I'll give you one good example, next door abuse. You had the parents lining from, from one of this room to the other about the sibling policy. But what did our board do? It kicked the can down the road, because some board members are getting ready to go for reelection bid, didn't want to deal with it then. So that's all I'm saying is, is Michael talking about the hard choices, those are things we're gonna have to deal with. And I'm just gonna say, you, you want to hire somebody from out afar, come in here and deal with the issue, where the issue of the board has to make those hard decisions. So that, that's the thing, I'm sitting back, I love to have those discussions in the Cow meeting, because that's where it's gotta start. It's gotta start with the board, and, and you had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with some groups you carried out of town in a hotel. I don't know if that's, if that's, if that situation is gonna help, because it really comes with educating the community. It really comes with educating the community, the community has to make that stand. They, they have to want the changes, and they have to force the elected people that they put in office to make those changes. That's all I'm saying.
Ms. Coats?
So, Mr. Gill is...
Oh, I think they went to go do an interview right there.
But Mr. Gill said, in, in one of their recommendations, which I thought was pretty brilliant, was a team of consultants that have no, that, that, that aren't within the district, that bring that outside point of view, that, that don't have the connection or beholden, I think was the word, to those groups. Is RIO's, your, I, is, is, is in your opinion, RIO's that group?
It is. In my opinion, opinion, they have the expertise to deal with the complex, intractable challenges in communities. When I say deal, by bringing people together who have different viewpoints, different agendas.
Well, ironically, I know what they did with the FARC, because...
Okay.
Sorry, I'm, I'm familiar with that aspect.
And, and to, um, into shape, into build something that is plausible, that can be implemented.
So, is that, that team, that group, that entity that does this work, have, have you had that conversation with the, the experts at Clemson? Do they echo that this is a good team to, to, to meet what they were envisioning when they said that? It's a fancy way of saying, do they know that's who you want, they buy in on it?
I've had numerous conversations with the Clemson team. I think it was a week before last, I and Edward, we drove up to Clemson. We spent some time on campus with both Lee and Greg and another, a couple of other members of that team. So we've had in-depth conversation on the study that they've done, and our next steps in engaging with RIO's partners as a world-class organization to be able to pull this, pull this together.
Good, and thank you for that. So, I'm sure the board's gonna want to know about this group. Any information you can give us to, to help us. But one of the things they also, you said was the thirty days with the eight to twelve people, and the very first question I asked you was, do you have the resources, the money? Clearly you have the support of your superintendent, because you've begun this work. So in the terms of the resources, I'm saying, okay, we've got the, we've got a funding stream, we've got the support of the district leader to allow you to do this, we've got this team willing to work. You said that work would take about thirty days, so now I'm thinking it's October. How soon are you gonna get on the road and get this started? Because, you know, I, I don't, I don't want those thirty days to start on October fifteenth, I want those thirty days to start on August thirtieth.
Okay, so let me give you the timeline.
Okay.
And I may have miscommunicated on thirty days. So I talked about the organizing team, the smaller group.
That was it, the organizing team.
So that team has already met.
Okay.
And so we met two and a half weeks ago.
Okay.
And that's about a dozen people, plus myself, plus two of the RIO's consultants. So, and plus a support staff here. So fifteen people. And so we had that, that meeting. A part of that work of the RIO's partners is to have what they call dialogue interviews with, with people that would be involved in this project, and that's roughly ninety minutes of a video conference. So they have had probably a dozen of those so far. They'll have another twelve to sixteen. That will, that work will be concluded on the dialogue interviews sometime between now and the middle of September. September the twenty, um, it's, it's the last week of September, I don't remember the exact date, I think it's the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh would be the, it's right now, that is the plan for the first two and a half day workshop.
With the larger group?
That's with the larger group. And then the person that I mentioned, Adam McCuhoney, who was the person that started this type of work, he didn't start it in South Africa, he, he started it in the UK. But at any rate, he'll be here, along with other members of the RIO's team. And then, so that work then in September is really for, and, and, and I want to stress again, the diversity around multiple factors here, multiple factors. And so, and so that work in September then will, that the team will start to understand through looking at the Clemson report, looking at other reports, talking with a lot of people, doing this facilitation type work, what some of the challenges are, and how to develop those scenarios. In October, the end of October, would be the second two and a half day workshop. In that workshop, the team, the RIO's, the larger team will invite concerned people that have expertise in for a full day of discussion on, from, from various factors. A part of the work also at that time, and the second one, is what the RIO's partners call a learning journey. So they will identify in the first work session, organizations and people within organizations that have dealt with or are dealing with complex issues, and how they have been trying to overcome them successfully. And so they will have team members of the larger group, the twenty-four, twenty-five, that will actually go out into these, to these organizations and study that. And then also at the second one, they'll start developing these, these scenarios. And then November, then in November, would be the last of the three workshops, and they would finalize the, the, the scenarios during the interim period between end of November and end of, end of the first semester. They will finalize the writing and publishing, the publication, in different formats. There will be different formats of publications, and that will be released sometime in January. And then in January, we will engage them one last time to, well, I say, it's part of the phase one here, to be able to identify out of the two to four potential futures that we, that's created, which ones have, resonate with a number of people, enough people in the county to be able to take those on. And then one important factor, you know, so it's not really a CCSD-only type initiative, this applies to the entire county here. So the people that you would see on this, on these teams then represent different, different sectors of the county.
Which I think is really fantastic, because ultimately, when, when we, when our children graduate after the twelfth grade, somebody else is going to make a decision on that child's career, based on whether we did a good job or not in preparing them. So we have to definitely include them, and I think that's great. And, and I can commit that the team that you have assembled, that the people that you have agreed are the ones that need to start this. As a board member, one of the things we like to do is tell you what to do. I just want to know who these folks are, but I'll support that. There needs to be no reason for us to come back and nitpick what you did two and a half weeks ago, we don't need that, we need to keep going. My biggest fear is, I think there are some very definite school configuration and course offerings that, that I don't want that not to be done in August of nineteen. I don't want to have a plan that comes to us in January that says, we've already finished magnet application window, and I'm, I'm just using that as an example, or a plan that comes to us and says, but we haven't found, but, but this can't be implemented that quickly. I mean, we're here today, and congratulations, you and I agreed when we met that football season would not be a good time for y'all to be here. You're five days out, you ran into the corner. But that was the reason for doing this work now, is that if we're going to do some school configurations, if we're going to start talking about course offerings, we're not going to talk about twenty twenty in those scenarios. Construction, I get all that, but I really just, I'm not trying to be critical, but I really want some of these easier, where I consider things that are within your wheelhouse implemented, and I don't want the timeframe to stop that from being able to happen ASAP.
I, I agree, I agree. And, and I think, when I take a look at the budget development process, I'm very cognizant of how the recommendations feed into the budget development for next fiscal year.
As well as the communication for potential change that the community would deserve to know.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other questions, then I, I just want to say thank you to all the work that you all did, which it's hard for me to look at all that orange out there, but...
Coordinated with the purple tie on Don Kennedy, we are, we're being overwhelmed. This is an invasion.
I will say, knowing, knowing what we paid for as a district, and the amount of time that you all were down here, and the amount, the number of appointments that you had, and meetings that you had with people, you know, you went far, far, far above. I, I know what Michael says about, you know, we, we need to do more, and I think, I want to just say that I do have, as one person, the will to do what you've recommended today and do more than that. We have to be bold, you know, when, if, whenever we all rotate off the board, if the district's in the same place it was, four years, or eight years, or twelve years, then we haven't done our job. So we've gotta be bold, and I think this whole shared future discussion has gotta be in our discussion at every single meeting. So, our next item is consideration of executive session items. I've had a couple of board members ask us if we could take a quick break, so if we could just take a break and reconvene at ten till eight, so you have a seven-minute break. Is that okay with everybody? Yep? Okay, thanks, everybody, let's come back to order. Trying to get Priscilla back on. Thanks, everybody, for allowing us to take a quick little break, and hopefully you did too. The next item on our...
It's Priscilla.
Hey, we got you. So the next item on our agenda is, oops, hopefully she's still there. The, I promised Eric we'd be out of here before eight-thirty, so, is a contractual matter, this is item four A. I mean, I would, my suggestion is that we not take any action on this item today, and we allow staff to work on it a little bit more. That's my personal opinion.
Well, if I can sense it, then we'll delay action until next meeting.
If everybody's okay with that, great. Then the next item is item four B. So I need a motion to approve, to, well, I'll make a motion, to approve and direct staff to negotiate a contract to purchase fifteen acres as described, using the funding sources identified.
Second.
Okay? So do we have any questions on that? Okay? So, do we have any questions on that item?
Yeah. D two bus lot, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Was that the only feasible, only?
Yes, Mr., Mr. Barrowey said they've done much research. They had another location that, that we wouldn't. This, this is, this is already approved.
Okay, Mr. Barrowey, do we, do we need fifteen acres for the bus lot? Can we do less than that?
We would like to have it for the potential growth of Mount Pleasant, but more so that that's the parcel of land that the owners wants to sell.
And we do have.
Oh, so that particular parcel he wants to sell?
Correct.
Right, it's one parcel.
And that's a lot, that's a lot of money.
Correct.
I mean, a lot of money for, for a bus lot.
I wouldn't say it's a lot of money for a bus lot because of our need for transportation opportunities. So, I, I, I just respectfully disagree that it's a lot of money for a bus lot. I, I just disagree.
And we, and we do have plans for Reverend Collins, too. We do have plans for a third high school in Allandonson.
I know, so, when you, the other line we spoke about, the eighty, the hundred and eighty acres I know that we spoke about, wasn't it much better price breaker for that land?
Yes, sir, it was.
This is, this is like maybe ten times the amount of money, isn't it?
I don't think it's ten times the amount of money. I don't have the exact amount of the district one land.
But let's be careful about the prices, because we don't want to hurt.
That's why we're not getting the hundred acres.
All right, go ahead. You go, you go call your vote.
All right, so we have a motion to approve and direct staff to negotiate a contract to purchase fifteen acres as described, using the funding source as identified. And if y'all want to, let's go ahead and vote electronically.
Almost make it sound like American Idol.
It does, doesn't it?
Except we don't have the exciting music.
Oh, sorry, Priscilla, I'm sorry. How do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'll go back to.
She logged in, she can.
Yeah, she isn't. Okay, so Julie, we've done that.
How'd you do, Julie?
I'm waiting on Mr. Miller.
Yeah, correct.
Oh, see.
He doesn't know whether to abstain or not.
Oh, and I never abstained.
All right.
Come on, study it before you get here, people.
The funding source we already identified, right?
Yes, the funding source is identified.
It's on your agenda.
I got you.
So, are we waiting on anybody, Julie? Still Mr. Miller, or no?
Nope.
Oh, he says he voted. Okay? It hadn't popped up yet. Okay, so real quick, Mr. Hollenshed, let's do it this way, real quick, just to cover our bases. Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
I abstain.
You abstain?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
No.
It's up there.
Oh, okay.
It's only making public voting, I don't want.
Okay. Okay, all right, so the motion passes. The next item is item C four. I would like to make a motion to overturn the constituent board decisions for, decision for just student number eighty-four.
Second.
Just wait a minute, wait a minute. The, we talked about.
This is transfer.
I don't, on that made.
Reverend Collins?
You're eighty-four, right?
Yes.
I'm looking right at it.
Okay.
So, you say you want to overturn just the one for Burke?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any questions on that?
Probably another one, Cindy had a question on.
So, we want to, so my motion is.
A question answered in the executive session.
My motion, and the second is just to overturn just number eighty-four.
All right.
Okay, okay.
And, and I know we're all new at this, and we're all trying, but I, I don't know if we need to remain silent or make act, or, or.
I'm going to go through and have everybody vote.
Yeah, I think we still need a verbal change.
Okay, so Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
No, I mean on all of them. We're not a.
Yeah, all of them.
You know, we, we can, because all, all four before us, I would, I would make a motion that we overturn number eighty-four and uphold the constituent decision on eighty-five and eighty-six, noting for the record that number eighty-three no longer required action.
Will you accept a friendly amendment to make that your motion?
Yeah, yeah.
That way, that way, it covers everything that was before us.
So, I made the motion. I'll accept the friendly amendment to have, make it Cindy's motion. And Mr. Miller will, so we've got that, all right, so we're.
But we don't need.
I know, all right, everybody stop talking. We're, the motion. And, and may uphold.
Digital board decision for student eighty-five and eighty-six.
With the understanding that.
No action on eighty-three.
No action is needed on number eighty-three.
I was going to give her time to type the sentence, if y'all don't mind. And then, noting for the record that no action was required for number eighty-three. That way, everything before us is addressed in the record.
Everyone, that's Sully. She's our new media.
I was trying to figure out why the stranger was sitting in the front row.
She was orange. I figured she was.
And the best seats in the back.
You ready, Julie?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mr. So, she's going to put up our voting, but just. It is right now. Okay, so Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Coats?
Mine's on my screen.
Mr. Gar, oh, Mr. Reverend Collins?
Yes.
If you guys were to hit change vote, it would pop up in the motion.
Go back to the, to the main screen, get it.
Okay, let's, let's get our voting done first, and everybody stop talking. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Staub's?
I'll vote yes on this one.
How are you voting?
I've already voted.
All right, Reverend Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Miller?
What? I already did it.
Okay.
Your motion.
I'll do a quicker next one.
Okay, so. Okay, all right, so you'll tell. So, the motion carries, seven to zero. No, she's not. I was just kidding. She's not on the line, so. Okay, so the next item is.
Out of county?
Item D, out-of-county request to remain. And there were, there were two requests there. Do we have any?
Make a motion to deny.
All right, so we have a motion to deny from Ms. Coats. And we have a second from Mr. Miller.
No question.
All right, we have a question from Reverend Collins.
Is this student currently attending the school now?
Both of them are.
Both of them are, yes. Yes, they both are, and both of the parents have moved out of the county and are requesting to remain and not pay tuition.
Just for this one year?
No, for two years. They're both eleventh graders.
So, could we consider one year, Mr. Miller?
So, and I think maybe my motion needs to be rephrased because what we have consistently done is not denied the request, but we will approve the request and not waive the tuition.
Right.
So, if they, if they want to follow the policy for out-of-county students, our vote, if we do it that way, allows them to do so. But what we haven't done for the other seven to ten that have come before us is waive the tuition.
So, do you like to make your motion then to approve if they pay tuition?
Yes.
And I'll still, I'll still second that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Is this something that they'd have to come back next year, or just kind of ride throughout the rest of their?
But it's two years. It's for two years.
That's a one-year motion, right?
No, they're, they, they have come to us and said, we would like to attend your school and, and not, and not pay tuition. They are more than welcome to come and ask us that next year. We have not made a vote that says you couldn't ask for a twelfth grader to do that. So, we've not prevented parents' future action by this.
It's just that they have to pay the tuition.
It's a one-year decision, and then they come back.
No, Natalie is saying it's a, it's a two-year. It's a two-year.
Oh, really?
No, the parent could come next year and say, I would like you to do it for one year. That'd be a different request with a different motion.
But they don't have to now.
Without a tuition, without tuition, you're saying.
The request before you is for two years. You didn't write that next year they have to come back and say,
Oh, I see, okay.
You didn't consider it last year, will you consider it for this next year? But the request today is for two years.
And see, and your motion, and your motion is again.
My motion is to allow them to remain but not waive the tuition, consistent with what we have done with all the other students.
I'll still second that.
Okay, so, it should be on your computer, but just to be safe, Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins? Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub's?
Yes.
Reverend Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, so the motion passes, and, yep, who, what do we need, Julie?
No, that's okay. It's just.
Okay.
No.
No, it's not a last.
It's Staub.
People are waiting.
Staub's not clicking till he says his, his answer.
So, click as soon as you've made your decision. The next, the next action is an item number E, which is a request for out-of-county request to enroll.
And waive tuition.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and waive tuition. I'd make a motion to approve student attending a school in constituent District Two with, that has openings in kindergarten with no tuition.
I'll second.
So, just, just for discussion's sake, what if that school is overcrowded for third grade? I mean, we, or, or first grade, you, you.
Well, if they, they're going in at kindergarten, so they're, they have space in kindergarten. They're going to have space in third grade.
Yeah.
Now, do we have any concerns that this person could literally change their job, and we've made a twelve-year decision, thirteen-year decision for that child in that constituent district?
We could, we could, we could amend the motion to say, while the parent is employed as a SRO in that district.
I.
Well, how do y'all, right, Cindy has questions, Staub's questions?
All right, so my question is, based on something that one of our esteemed colleagues mentioned earlier, that one of the reasons we want to do this is because the SRO would be with their child at the own, at the own school. That was more compelling to me than the idea of just finding a place to put them somewhere in a, in an area that's thirty minutes across. I mean, District Two's pretty big.
Yeah, but, but, well, as we discussed earlier, the person driving to that school is going to pass a number of elementary schools on the way to the school they're requesting, that, that, that has space, too.
I have a question.
I would, right, Mr. Miller?
My, my question is, and it probably doesn't sound like much, but what kind of impact does having one additional child in a class make?
It depends on how many kids are already in the class. Sometimes it takes it over to another teacher. Sometimes it doesn't.
Well, maybe that's what we need to find out.
I wouldn't lay the vote for that.
Well, I, and I know.
All right, hold on, hold on, Mike, I'll score.
I think if we're making a decision based on the fact that we would like to accommodate this particular person because of what they're doing in our system, and the school is overcrowded, I would like for us to have the potential impact of that. Not just kind of making this decision in the dark, not in the dark, but because we want to, we want to be in good faith. We want to do this because it seems like the right thing, the right thing to do. But if it's going to impact a teacher point or, or something like that, I think we need to know that before we make this type of decision. Not just on this particular, but anytime we have a recommendation for a student to go into a school and there's no space.
I would think the one thing we, you know, this, this brings up an interesting concept that there are ninety-four other interesting concepts that could come before us. And I, I, like you said, we tend to make bad decisions, but I think we might sometimes make bad decisions because we make one good one, and then all of a sudden realize we can't duplicate it ten times.
Right, but my, but my motion, just to be clear, my motion is that we move to approve the student attending a school in the same zone with space, so not, you know.
I know, I know that was a no.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so not a particular school.
No, it's an elementary school.
So, then we're basically not giving the parent what they're asking.
Right, we're not giving, we do that all the time.
Not exactly that way.
Hold on, wait, we got a lot of talk. We've got a motion on the floor. I'm, I'm willing to add to the motion that we say while the SRO is employed in D two. I mean, they're going to be. Well, my motion would be move to approve the student. Yeah. All right, so my, the motion is, Julie, I'll tell you, I made the motion, and Mr. Hollenshed seconded, to move to approve the student attending a school in the same zone, which is D two, that has space available, while, and I can amend it to say while the SRO is employed in D two because of Cindy's concern about.
I don't think we need that part, the last part.
All right, so, are we ready to, do we want, do you, Kevin, do you feel strongly, does the pleasure of the board, do you want to feel strongly about adding the while employed at D two? I mean, they're employed there now.
I'm going to.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yeah. Again, I'd just say, basically, you know, having been a police officer, having seen female officers have children, it makes it very convenient for this officer to be able to serve that district, have her child attend that school.
I tried to do this in executive, and Kate told us to do it out here.
Discussion, right.
Call for the vote.
Okay, let's call for the vote. Okay, so this is item four E.
Your motion is still on the floor?
My motion is still on the floor.
Motion you're voting on is on your screen and on that screen.
It's on the screen. Kate, so Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yay.
Ms. Coats?
No.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Didn't you say that had to be just for this year?
No. Then, no, her motion is exactly what you're reading on the screen.
Let's make the other motion last.
Mr. Miller?
For the motion, yes, for this particular motion.
Mr. Staub's?
I'm going to abstain.
Reverend Matt? And I vote yes. Motion passes, and we definitely need to work on a policy for this, Natalie and Cindy.
Madam Chair, I would submit that we probably just wrote the policy.
Well, we can still work on one. Okay.
Wouldn't be the first time, Cindy.
So, the next item is F. Yep, we have a motion to approve homeschool request from Reverend Collins. May the motion to approve. Staub's, can you second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Staub seconded, so the motion was Reverend Collins. The second was Mr. Staub's to approve, or this homeschool. And Mr. Hollenshed, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub's? Reverend Matt?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. The next item is item five A. It is policy JFAA. We discussed this at committee of the whole. So, I have a motion, we did first reading on it.
Coming out of committee.
Yep, it's coming out of committee.
Refresh me, please.
Sure, give me just a moment.
I want to talk about it, too.
So, it's coming out of committee, so to discuss, we need a second.
So. All right, so we have a motion for Ms. Coats, and a second from Ms. Reverend Collins.
Right, and.
Kevin, from Kevin.
Oh, it's from Kevin, sorry.
From Kevin. So, this motion is referencing, and it, it's not accurate on what you're voting. This motion, this motion takes the decision about enrolling students new to the district and puts that decision in the constituent board, school principals, and the Department of Alternative Programs purview. And there's a sentence in there that said the district will not admit a student who has been expelled. Eric, I'm sorry, Michael made a motion at the committee of the whole that passed that said we would say recently expelled, so Natalie, we need to correct that.
Currently expelled.
Currently expelled.
It, it will reflect in the, the next meeting.
Right, so this is basically how you enroll students who have been expelled from other districts.
So, if they're currently expelled, we wouldn't enroll them. I'm sorry, Reverend Collins, you've got a question?
Yeah, I read it kind of carefully. I'm, I'm not very comfortable with it just, just yet. And one of my issues is that, not only is the deal with the student that's been expelled, even when it's over.
When what's over?
The expulsion.
Okay.
Even when it's over, that student, this still requires, this requires the student to still come back to the constituent board. If the principal has concerns of, maybe what they've been expelled for before, or whatever they were in trouble for, it, it still puts the, it puts the person back into the system of the constituent board for discipline, because they could be placed in alternative, alternative placement in the DAP, depending on how comfortable the principal is, with, with what they did, what they, what they were charged with, or what they're accused of. I just wonder if it's kind of double jeopardy. I think it just needs a little bit of work, is what I'm trying to say. But I, but I need, I don't have to answer tonight for it, but I want to meditate on it some more. Because I wanted to make sure that if a child's been punished for what they did, nothing's gonna stop them from coming back to school unless there's evidence from they're still carrying a gun or something like that or if they're gonna kill somebody. But I want to make sure we got it cleaned up enough.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could clarify the motion, the part that Reverend Collins has a concern with has always been in effect. That's not new.
Okay.
The only part that we are voting to change is the red. Remember, the stuff that is not in red is stuff that this board approved on March 9, 2015. So, while the concern could be legitimate, we've been operating under what he just said with the constituent boards having the authority to consider those records when they reapply the next year. That has always been there. That's not being changed by this changes in the policy.
Right, if we could hold off on that part, I don't... To me, that may be double jeopardy. I'm just not sure, you know, if they gotta reconsider again.
Mr. Miller?
Cindy, I'm trying to find in this policy, does it address current students, students who used to be in our district, let's say went to DJJ or even worse, were incarcerated, get released from jail, and then look to matriculate back into our system? Does this policy address that? I don't think it does, does it?
To me, it looks like it's...
See, I know we have a policy that addresses... Because we have staff at DJJ that to transition them back into the district. So, I'm not sure if this is where that policy is. I know this is... The only changes to this are instead of giving the associate superintendent the authority, if you look at it, it removes that and puts a team that includes the principal as well as the Department of Alternative Programs and Services. So, really, the intent of the change of policy, the other issues you have, you have. You've had them, although we've been doing this for three years. What this did was included the principal and the Department of Alternative Programs and Services rather than leaving the decision into one person's hands. That's why everywhere it says the appropriate associate superintendent is marked out and the team is put back in.
I'm sorry, Eric, this is... It is first-time enrollment. So, my next question is, would a student going from middle school to high school be first-year enrollment?
Natalie?
Now, is first-time enrollment considered first time in that grade level or first time in the district?
I think in the district, but according to this.
In the district.
First time in the district is what I thought.
Can we specify that?
Can you tell me where it is?
Is this on the first page, under first-time enrollment? My question is, does matriculating from middle school to high school constitute first-time enrollment? So, it'll be a first time in high school? Is this first time to the district? I don't think... It just needs to say that. I don't know if it says that.
I thought I understood it meant the district is what I understood.
And that is correct.
Right.
It said enrollment, punt enrollment. The school principal should review student enrollment information. If there's a concern, the information should be followed to Department of Alternative Programs.
All right, guys, too, let's... Wait, wait, hold on. Just one minute. So, this would just be first reading. So, if we need to make any adjustments between now and second reading, we can. Reverend Collins?
Yeah, I just want to clarify once they've been made. This part is in red, so it is a new change when you see in the first-time enrollment where it says, punt enrollment, the school principal should review student enrollment information.
It used to say the appropriate associate superintendent would review the information.
Just one minute, please. If there's a concern, the information should be followed to Department of Alternative Programs Services. That refers to DAP. DAP shall refer to the appropriate constituent board in instance, if a student enrolled in the constituent district for the first time. If it appears to the principal and DAP staff from non-school records and or student disciplinary records, the student does not meet the district's standards for conduct and behavior. So, I think when you consider that, that the district's standards, the conduct and behavior, all has to be defined clearly.
Which, oh, they are in other places.
I mean, hold on, in the policy, I mean. It has to be defined in the policy. And then, if this principal can deny the student entry or the DAP can do it, it has to be determined how long can we keep a student out of this regular school.
Maximum enrollment bar applies to one year. It's on the last paragraph.
No, what I mean is from attending the type of school they want to attend.
However...
With this, they're putting it anywhere.
What you're voting on, Reverend Collins, is this. What it used to say was the associate superintendent shall refer to the appropriate constituent board any student who seeks enrollment in the constituent district for the first time. And if it appears to the associate superintendent from non-school records and/or student disciplinary records that the student does not meet the district's standard for conduct and behavior, the change isn't the stuff you're talking about. That's been in place for three years and that's not changed. What we're doing is taking it from one person's hands and putting it in the team that handles alternative programs as well as a school-based leader.
Okay, all right. Reverend Collins, look, this is the kind of stuff that we need to be prepared for or do in the Committee of the Whole. Reverend, Mr. Hollandshed, sorry.
Either send us back to the Committee of the Whole or we work our table for now.
No, I think we should do... We can do first reading and we can talk about it at the Committee of the Whole in September before we have second reading.
I would respectfully remind the board that as long as we defer action on it, the associate superintendent's making the decision on this student single-handedly.
Madam Chair, call the question, please.
There is no person that is in that job. That's the whole reason we had to change this. So, we really have no action going on.
But then the principal still does it.
Wait, stop. We had first reading at Committee of the Whole. This is only first reading. If we want it, we can do first reading tonight, up or down. And if it proceeds, then at the Committee of the Whole, we can, you know, we can work on it between now and then.
So, let's just call the vote and then the vote will determine the future.
The question's been called. Mr. Hollandshed, not everybody's computer is still live, Julie.
I don't know, where's it at? I don't even see it.
Mr. Hollandshed?
Oh, I got one... I got one bar left.
Okay, Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
I think I vote no.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Staub's?
I'll vote yes. I have no battery left, so...
Reverend Mack?
Can't play your games.
And I vote yes, so the motion passes. So, Julie, let's just... We're gonna continue to just go by paper because I have to make a vote. All right, so the next item is item 5B, policy KHC, which is the distribution posting of promotional materials. This is a second reading.
Who'd approve?
All right.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Miller and a second from Mrs. Coats. Do we have any questions? All right, Mr. Hollandshed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Mr. Reverend Collins?
Come back in a minute, please.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub's?
Yes.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Charleston County School District.
Reverend Mack?
Of trustees.
And I vote yes. Mr. Reverend Collins, you're abstaining? Okay, so the motion passes.
It's muted.
I don't think she is. I don't remember. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is item 5C. We discussed this at Committee of the Whole. This is a request from the Hotel Bella Grace for a liquor waiver request.
Make a motion approved.
So, we have a motion to approve from Mr. Hollandshed. Do we have a second?
Second. And Madam Chair, for clarification, this is a request that is coming although there are, I think, four identified schools within 300 feet of a liquor-selling establishment. State law changed this year that requires new applicants to ask the school and any religious organization. So, you'll find that we have other places already doing this. This is because it's a change in the state law.
So, we have other schools that are near hotels.
That are closer than this hotel is.
Right.
And if they have to come back for a re-request or a reapplication, they would have to go to the churches within 300 feet.
They've already done the churches and they approved.
And the school districts, right.
They already did that.
All right, Mr. Hollandshed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Nope.
Mr. Staub's?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. The next item is item 6A. Mr. Kennedy, we may need your input here. This is a tax anticipation note.
For the board's edification, this has been for $69 million to cover us until the tax collections come in January.
Yep.
What was it, 99 million?
Yep.
I don't see 99 anywhere. I see something that says not to exceed 69.
Not to exceed 69.
I just wanted to point out to the board that this is a standard amount. They're not asking for an increase.
So, do I have a motion to approve?
Approved.
All right, we have a motion to approve for Ms. Coats. Do I have a second? From Reverend Mack, any questions?
I do have a question. It may be a silly question, but this... The way this works is that we... It's actually like a loan against our own money?
Sort of.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Explain how taxes come in after January. I'm sorry, this is a bond transaction that the district does every year.
Yes, sir.
It's in anticipation of our revenues coming in from our aflorium taxes. So, it's a cash flow mechanism knowing that we have to pay our operating expenses, salaries, et cetera, in ensuing months here. And the taxes won't be collected until starting around the end of November. And so, as soon as the taxes are collected early next year, we will repay the bond note.
Do we get any additional money by issuing the TAN, like issuing this one? Do we get any additional money?
We don't, but we do not. But I will say that looking back for five years, I think, this is the first time in that time period where the bond has been issued for less than $70,000. So, our cash flows are improving.
So, this will go all strictly to GOAT?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Hollandshed, we have a motion from Cindy and a second from Reverend Mack. Stay right there, Don. Mr. Hollandshed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Staub's?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. The next item is item 6B, which is...
This is a bond anticipation resolution.
As Cindy just said, this is a bond anticipation resolution. Do you want to give us a quick highlight, Mr. Kennedy?
Well, it's very similar to the TAN, which is the tax anticipation note for the general fund. This is for the capital to pay off our debt. We do this every year to take a look at the resolution or the background. We've done it since, I think, 2004 when we started issuing a significant amount of debt. I've made presentations in the last few months, twice, I think. I think at the Committee of the Whole this month showing that over time period, a timeframe from now going to 2032, that this approach allows the district to pay down its debt on its school to essentially be debt-free in about 12 to 14 years.
Thank you, sir.
Move for approval.
So, we have a motion from Reverend Mack and a second from Mr. Staub's. Do we have any other questions? All right, Mr. Hollandshed, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Coats?
Yes.
Reverend Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Staub's?
Yes.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes. Thank you, Julie. The next item is superintendent's report.
Thank you, and I know you've been waiting all evening long for this report. I am mindful of the time and the fact that all of you have full-time obligations outside this board and many of you have to get up and go to work in the morning. And we've used a big chunk of your time tonight. So, on your tables, there is a copy of the report that is now displayed on the screen. Thank you. And I will simply call to your attention the contents of it and invite you to look at it on your own time, when you have more time. The first page just tells you a lot about the professional development sessions that I thought went better this year than ever in the past and to indicate that more than 400 K-1 teachers and 300 exceptional children teachers were trained to use the instrument that detects dyslexia and other reading disorders that this board committed to use last spring. The second page, we simply highlighted a few other professional development areas in which we knew you were interested. which we knew you were interested. The Gullah-Gi'chee speaking students, the adaptive digital content, restorative practices, using the comprehensive literacy initiative, trauma-informed education, the phonics first, which we know is critically important to children coming from homes where they don't have a rich language development, the second step, social-emotional development program, and so forth. So those are just some of the highlights. The third page gives you an example of school-based professional development. We highlight here the efforts of Vanessa Brown at Baptist Hill, who's focused on evidence-based practice. This is the world's most renowned expert in what works, what actually works to produce results with children like ours. And then to point out that Baptist Hill almost doubled their overall SC Ready scores since last school year, and it's because of this sort of focused intentionality on the leader's part. Then in operations, which Jeff Barrowey affectionately calls beans, buses, bandwidth, and buildings.
That was cute.
He gives you...
Four B's?
The four Bs. He gives you some highlights of nutrition services. If you haven't had an opportunity to drop in at lunchtime, I invite you to do so. It is, it is a constantly improving service to kids. The students now get side salads with every meal. There are condiment stations, so if they get a sandwich, they choose the condiments they want, and lunch participation is up already by at least 7%. We completed more than, the facilities department completed or oversaw more than 100 projects this summer. We were down to the wire on a few of them. We have a couple, we're still finishing up major renovations, alterations at Midland Park. If you get a chance to stop by, those classrooms have been enlarged. It's much more feasible for so many small children in a, in a small space. And then, of course, the successful return of the fifth grades back to Ladson and A.C. Cochran. I think, Mr. Miller, you were at one of those schools today.
Mm-hmm.
It's operating very smoothly. We're so happy about the 16 new SROs, more to come. And we have two new entrance vestibules constructed in two of our schools and another one on, online that will be done this year. And then our bus complaint log is improving. I promised that we would give a 24-hour turnaround on those calls, and the people are learning to use that log. So we fell maybe a day behind in returning the calls, but we've, that team has caught back up. We're really pleased with what they've done. Very quickly on the staffing update, we don't, we had two vacancies when we started school. They were both, both at Baptist Hill. When we were down there the first day, we learned that she had hired for both of those positions. But every single day, regrettably, we have someone who resigns. So that's a moving target that we try to catch up with. These are some impressive statistics. We have 519 new teachers to CCSD. The total number of positions that were posted this year is 740. Just think about running that many people through the system. It's, it's a massive and, and impressive effort. To fill positions, we hired six new teacher librarians, largely as a result of the partnership that Bill Briggman and Human Resources and others established with the University of South Carolina. That's been very well supported by the folks here at the district, and, and the response rate on that was incredible. And we hired 44 new math teachers, several of them from surrounding districts. So the steps the board took made a big difference. I want to, just on the, on the final slide, thank everyone, including board members and the district staff members in the audience and others who aren't here tonight, or volunteers who helped out, supporting families in the ways that are listed there, and, and in additional efforts. The admin support that was given in the offices wherever it was needed, and the school staff support, just basically whatever it took to get the job done, everyone pitched in. And as far as I know, we had a, a very smooth opening, considering all the, all that could go wrong with 50,000 students and several thousand employees returning to the school year. So thank you, everyone. Thanks, thanks to the board for your support of the resources that schools needed and for the efforts and for being there yourselves on the first day. I'd like to ask Bill Briggman now to come up and say a word about some, some funds that we were not expecting to receive and the way in which those funds are being targeted.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Wood first?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a...
With the, with the salad offered every meal, side salad, is that something the kids buy, or is that included in the meal?
Included in the meal, it's one of the menu choices they have.
Maybe I can do without it.
Offer a premium, a premium lunch also.
You know, I, I have run into that. I'd be glad to talk to you about that offline and get the answers to you.
Do the kids pay additional fee to get a premium lunch?
We'll get the answers to you. I don't know. I don't...
That's an offer, not a requirement.
So I'll jump right in. First of all, I want to say again, I do appreciate the support from the superintendent and the board for salary adjustments this year for teachers. I, I think that has been definitely one of the reasons, one of the top reasons we've been so successful with recruitment, I'll just be honest. We are really the highest-paying district in the South, in South Carolina right now. But what I'm very excited to inform the board on is back in late July, I was notified, Dr. Postaway and I, from the state, that we are now one of 36 school districts in South Carolina that will be, for this year, will receive funding for recruitment and retention of teachers. It's called the Rural Recruitment Initiative. It's a line item in the state budget and has been for, I think, about three, maybe this is the fourth year. So Charleston, this is the first year that we will receive funds. There are about 15 areas that you can spend the money on. I had a PowerPoint, a very short one, I'm not sure, sure what happened, but I'll just tell you very quickly.
Make sure we get it electronically for our records.
I can certainly do that. I'll say that the, the title of Rural Recruitment Incentive is a little bit misleading because it's not really about rural, it's about teacher turnover data. So based on the state data, five years of report card data, we show 11 and 1/2% as far as our teacher turnover. Oh, thank you. Somebody found it. So we're now eligible for this funding. Thank you, sir. And, and also know that the funds can be used district-wide, so it's not for a specific school, it's for all 80-plus sites, which is amazing.
How much money, talking about...
I'm going to tell you in just a moment.
Chris is like, get to it. Get to the money part, dude.
Yeah, I'll get to the good part in a minute. So the approved incentive, so CER, the Center of Educated Recruitment, Retention, and Advancement out of Winthrop, Jane Turner, who's the executive director, pulled together a number of HR folks years ago, and they created this approved list of how these funds could be spent. The biggest one for us, of course, is teacher recruitment expenses, which for us, we travel all over the southeast, so it's, it's travel, it's anything towards recruitment. It's, it's our giveaways, it's our table classes, it's all the recruitment items we might use. Website upgrades, meeting with Erica's team to really talk about a website for teacher recruitment, specifically for Charleston. Applicant tracking, we currently have an applicant tracking system. We'd like to do some upgrades to that system. Again, alternative route teachers, we've just had the state board approve Teach Charleston, so there's money for that. I won't read all of these, but one of the big highlights at the very bottom is we could actually have some type of teacher housing. So Jeff Barrowey and I have been talking about what that could look like. We're not interested in being landlords, but we would like to explore what that would look like. And then something I'll bring back to the next committee of the whole, there in the middle, first-year teacher salary stipend. One of the districts, as part of the 36, actually places their first-year teachers on the salary structure as a second-year teacher. And that, for the board, would, would get you closer to that $40,000 goal for a first-year teacher.
Would you really help with recruitment, too?
It, it will. And so I'm going to bring that back at the committee of the whole in September to really talk about that piece and how it helps us with recruitment for 2020. Because one of the things I've, I've always talked about with my team is early recruitment is really, really critical, but at that point in time, I thought of early recruitment as January, February, and it's now September, October, November. So that's really important. So Reverend Collins, to answer your question, when I went to this meeting back in July, and I did not know how much money, I thought maybe...
It's the state or federal.
This is state. I thought maybe 25, $50,000. We're the largest district at the table, so we received $1.6 million this year for recruitment and retention.
We are going shop.
What you talking about?
Excuse me, 1.6 million? Is it one, a one-time thing?
Is it...
It's just for this year.
Is it one-time recurring?
It is, well, I was told by the, by Jane Turner to expect the same allocation the following year. She's 99.9% sure that it will continue and doesn't see us, I don't know the answer to that. Because the state is so concerned about recruitment and retention of teachers and salary, I don't know that it's going to go away anytime soon. I think you're going to see additional districts added to the list.
I think the amount's going to...
But they keep increasing the amount, so that's a significant amount...
Line item in the budget, correct?
State budget.
State budget. Did they tell, no, I'm jumping in, but did they tell you how they fund that? Is that true?
I did not ask.
But they asked. They just said, thank you.
I was still trying to recover from the amount.
They have $7 million over in the budget, 7 million.
Well, I mean, that's why I asked them.
So I, and I have, to be honest, I was...
That's how they get you hooked, you know, they tell you they've got some money for